Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 17th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Before we get started with our business today, I have a short statement to make. Our hearts break for everyone affected by the senseless violence in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. If you're Israeli and/or have connections to the region and live in Bothell, we are glad you're here. You make Bothell a better place to live, and we want you to feel like you belong here. If you're Palestinian and/or have connections to the region and live in Bothell, we are glad you're here. You make Bothell a better place to live, and we want you to feel like you belong here. People should be able to live their lives without the threat of violence, regardless of where they live, what they look like, or how they worship. The targeting of innocent civilians and children is horrific. That part is simple, even in a historical context that can be complex. As violent events continue to unfold and escalate, our hearts are with the Bothell community members who are hurting, including those who are worried for the safety of their loved ones or mourning loved ones they have already lost. Our hearts are also with our community members who fear discrimination and violence being committed against them here. We condemn both antisemitism and Islamophobia, and neither will be tolerated in Bothell. Join us as we mourn those whose lives have been lost. Join us in hoping for the swift recovery of the injured, the safe release of those taken hostage, the safe return of those displaced from their homes, and the restoration of basic necessities of food, water, medicine, and other services that have been cut off to the Gazan population. Join us in calling for an immediate ceasefire and an end to the violence and bloodshed, and the presence of safety, freedom, and justice for all that is required to lead to Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Orange?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil? Councilmember Manke? Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra? Deputy Mayor, I see you on the screen. Can you? Thank you. All present, with the exception of Councilmembers McNeil and Manke.
Thank you, clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently; mute your microphone when not speaking; and for council attending remotely, use the raised-hand feature when you wish to speak. For meeting agenda approval, staff recommends reversing the order on study session items 23164 and 23165. Does council concur? I see a lot of nods. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none. We will move on to presentations, reports, and briefings with public engagement opportunities. You can take the Lot EFG survey, open through November 10th. You can look at the pictures out there in the lobby if you want on your way out. Council is exploring ways to temporarily activate city-owned Lot EFG. Share your thoughts on potential concepts with a five-minute online survey. We've got a comprehensive plan open house coming up. You can provide feedback, participate in activities, and help shape Bothell's future on October 26th at Skyview Middle School from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And a community workshop. You can join us November 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall for an interactive workshop to learn and collect feedback about the Inclusive Playground Project. Next up, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and was the year when Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2023 is the 151st anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautifying our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. And whereas the Bothell Parks and Recreation Board will celebrate Arbor Day on October 21st, 2023 by planting trees and shrubs at Pioneer Cemetery. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim October 21st, 2023, is the official celebration of Arbor Day. And I believe we have -- look at the -- you're so prepared, Scott.
Just have Scott Purdy, Parks Operations Manager for the City of Bothell, and Laurel Cyrus, our Parks Lead for the City of Bothell. Just want to ask you to please join us this Saturday at Pioneer Cemetery from 10:00 a.m. to noon to help us plant some shrubs and trees to help us celebrate Arbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Give it up for Parks Operations. All right, next up, we have a community report, Cascadia College Update. City Manager Stannard?
Thank you, Mayor, and we are honored this evening to have President Dr. Eric Murray here joining us to give an update about what's happening right in our community here at Cascadia College. As council knows, and I'll just reiterate, that within your council vision, there's contemplation of the importance of an education pipeline from the early ages all the way through graduate school, being able to do that here, learning and matriculating into the community and participating in our workforce, all through also the support of higher ed. And one of the council priorities is focusing on making sure that as an organization, we're working closely with Cascadia College and the University of Washington-Bothell to really be collaborating on strategies, not only around different programs, but how it infuses economic and cultural vibrancy into our community. I really enjoy working in college towns as a city employee because of the fact of new ideas that come in and out with the seasons. So as we are beginning a new season and a new school year, Dr. Murray is here tonight to give us some updates about what we might expect, so happy to turn it over to our friend.
Great. Thank you to the city manager. It was a nice introduction. And my yearly State of the College addresses that I've been doing for more than a decade seem to have more significance now because of what you've written in terms of your vision for where Bothell needs to be. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the few minutes that you've given me. We nicknamed my State of the College address the Cascadia Roadshow because I'm not just here in Bothell doing this, I'm doing this in six major cities in our district and for the three school districts we serve, but I always start right here in Bothell with it. So this is my test run, and you can give me feedback later. I've also been told that I shouldn't say "next slide," so instead, I'm going to point to the deputy city clerk and say, "Go Kodiaks. Go Kodiaks. Go Kodiaks." All right. Apparently, I said this at some point, but Cascadia is Washington's transfer specialist in a state that's nationally recognized for an exceptional community college system. We are well-known to have one of the best community college systems in the United States because of how we work together, and Cascadia was created as a transfer college. We don't do a lot of the professional technical programs, like you'll see at like Washington Tech or others, so there's no nursing or automotive, but really university preparation. Go Kodiaks. So today, we'll -- and we can actually keep going through some of these. We're going to talk a little bit about student success, equity and inclusion access, and there should be one more, I think, and growth, and we'll go to the next slide, which I'm not supposed to say. Go Kodiaks, students. I'm going to say "go Kodiaks" a lot if I do it next, please. So in terms of Cascadia as an institution, so that you know, we've churned this data through graduate interviews and the different kinds of surveys we're required to do, we have the highest percentage of students out of any community college that transfer to a university. We were designed that way. After college, earnings for Cascadia students are 9% higher than other community college grads. Our business graduates earn $16,000 more, and then our information technology graduates earn $11,000 more. We hope that's because they use Cascadia as a stepping stone to get to university, get that baccalaureate degree, and then go out and get these jobs that earn more money. That's why we think our numbers tend to trend higher. With regard to student success, other measures include: we have defined pathways to UW-Bothell; we increase our student retention through intrusive advising, making sure every student gets to meet with an advisor all throughout their time with us; we have great success at getting students from remedial math and English through into college level. That's especially important now. We're seeing, because of the pandemic, dips in learning and preparedness for college because of that. We received a $50,000 grant from the City of Kenmore to do an academy that especially targets students who have learning gaps, and we are doing some extra tutoring for them to get them up to college-level speed. And we have the highest retention rate, students who stay with us from one fall to the next. Nationally, that's about in the upper 40%. At Cascadia, it's 85% of students who start with us stick with us into a second year. So we're doing really well in terms of our student success metrics. Equity and inclusion is extremely important to us. I was moved and thankful for the opening remarks you made, Mr. Mayor, today. Appreciate those. One of the things we do to help support our students who come from marginalized backgrounds is something called Cascadia Scholars. It's a mentorship program. We started it two years ago with 16 students. It got popular. Last year, we had 53. This year, we have over 100 students in our mentorship program, and each of those students is assigned a mentor that helps guide them through their Cascadia College experience, and they have lots of extra wraparound services for their success. And those students who participate in that program stay through to completion better than students who don't participate in the mentorship program. We have an Equity and Inclusion Foundations course for all of our employees, and interestingly, it's gotten so successful. This is the foundations of what it means to work in an equitable and inclusive environment that the King County Public Library System has asked for three courses of it, 45 people. Riverview School District has asked for it, and the State Board for Community Colleges has asked for it. So something we created right at Cascadia is gaining ground and becoming an effective tool to help us understand what it means to work in this kind of environment. We also host Student of Color conferences. We'll be in our third year. Last year, we had over 600 students from North Shore School District, Lake Washington, and Riverview School Districts visit us and take part in this day-long programming, especially designed for them. That also leads to them attending Cascadia and UW-Bothell because they're exposed to higher education when they might not have had the opportunity to do that. And we've increased our Equity and Inclusion Department from two full-time employees now to five with interns and student workers. So it's part of our mission statement, absolutely a focus for our campus, to be inclusive to Third chapter of today, access, also a part of our mission. So we have set strategies and software to make higher ed accessible, which means we have advising software and enrollment software to keep us going. We keep the next one. There we go. So I think Guided Pathways is the name of this program of software and intrusive advising, and all of the community colleges are moving towards it. We guide them on a pathway to meta-majors instead of specific majors. That way, they have room for pivoting when they get to the university level, and it seems to be working. I talked a little bit about our Kenmore Grant Program called the Cascadia Academy. We anticipate this academy going on for a few years, and any support that any city would like to offer for the academy would be well-received. But the $50,000 starter program with Kenmore allows us to -- we have something called Tutoring Tuesdays, and students who need extra help come to campus to our Learning Center and get that remedial help so they can get up to speed. And then we've also just opened a classroom in the Together Center, which is the nonprofit hub down in Redmond with affordable housing on top of it, and our classes down there are full. And during the daytime, that's filled with Running Start students, and in the evening, we have English as a Second Language courses for folks who live in that neighborhood. And then lastly, our growth. Next slide, a year ago -- you're doing great, and I don't even have to say "go Kodiaks." Innovation Hall, we hope that the council will join us on November 16th. You should have received an invitation for the grand opening of our $80 million STEM building that we built with UW-Bothell. And faculty offices are mixed, classrooms are mixed. We've been doing tours during construction for the last six months. I think some of you came on those tours with us, and it's very exciting that we're about ready to open that. And then we are also on the list in two years to break ground on a new gateway building for Cascadia. That's where all of our student services and enrollment-centered services will be housed, and it'll be right at the opening, the grand opening of campus as you walk through. Just a reminder, all of the construction you see over there is UW-Bothell's, not to dismiss any construction-related problems onto them, but it is actually not a co-owned piece of land. UW bought that separately for themselves and had always planned to develop housing there. We benefit from that because it adds a dining hall to our campus, and those students in residence there become a part of the Cascadia community as well, and it's a nice blend. A year ago, I was here and talking a little bit about our enrollment crisis, and I was worried because the pandemic had forced our enrollment down to a point where we were relying on reserves to make ends meet. And we had enough reserves to operate for about three or four years, and I hoped that enrollment would come back so that Cascadia could thrive. I am very happy to report that our enrollment is 10%, almost 11% up this year, starting this fall, and we've never, ever, in the history of Cascadia, seen a double-digit enrollment increase. We had three years of double-digit enrollment decreases from 2017 through the pandemic. So things are turning around. Students are tending to come back in person to classes. That is their preferred mode of education. Those classes fill up before online classes. And we, this year, are financially stable, and that gives me hope that everything, as I've explained tonight, is going really well for us. So thank you for letting me update you on the college and our health, and happy to take questions if there's time. Councilmember Orange?
Well, so many questions, so I'll try to go fast. I just want to say I love the mentor program substituting in North Shore School District. I often tell students, in the context of math, give yourself grace because what you're doing now doesn't necessarily define your mathematic capability. Give yourself grace to grow and stick with it. And one of my sped math students I bumped into, and not this school, another school, she's becoming a civil engineer, sped math, and she's a civil engineer, and that makes me very happy. So I love the fact that you've got the mentoring thing going on. I went through and looked at the statistics, and I don't know why, at this point in my life, this question popped into my mind, and it's kind of -- I'm tossing it out to you, but really, in all the years I've heard this stat, I should have been asking this question. So when you say, like, after-college earnings are 9% higher, and what was it, against 33 other colleges? 9% higher than the average? 9% higher than the one who was right below you?
9% higher than the average.
Average, okay. Well, I have to tell you, I read the stats to my husband, and he's super picky about stats, and he goes, "Oh, that's impressive." So that was good. That was good.
I'm full of stats. I'll bring more next time.
Okay, good. And then the gateway building, is that at the south entrance or the north entrance?
It's going to be at the north entrance, so where the major round bus turnaround is. That eventually will go away, and buses will be having different routes through campus. And from that bus turnaround up until you meet the Cascadia buildings, that's where the new building's going to be.
Okay. Any of those trees planted, keeping some of them?
There will be no trees displaced in the building of this building.
Oh, you're going to have a whole bunch of fans over that one. So, speaking of trees, and then, I don't know, except, you know, you're going to get tired, you'll be able to say with me, "Four of my five children, Running Start at Cascadia."
Yeah.
Great, great start for them. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
One of the stats I brought is that 30% of our Running Start students come from the North Shore School District. More than 50% of the Running Start students we have at Cascadia don't come from the three school districts we serve. They come from outside of those school districts. We have a reputation for being really good at Running Start, and so a lot of homeschool networks use us for that purpose.
We were homeschoolers, so, you know, we would bid that. But you're saying 50% are outside of the other?
Of North Shore, Riverview, and Lake Washington School Districts.
That's very impressive.
Yeah. Anything else I can tackle for you tonight? Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Roadshow, in my mind, always has singing and dancing. So if you wanted to up your game, that's an option.
Wait till next year. City clerk, hit the music.
I will remember that. But I really do appreciate this. You've shared some really good news. Congratulations on increasing enrollment and looking at pandemic recovery. I am wondering about the E&amp;I Foundation's course. What other local institutions might be able to request participation in that course, and could it be the City of Bothell?
We are offering the courses to city governments, other jurisdictions, to state government entities. It is a seven-month course, one time a month, with some reading, videos, discussion. There is a small cost for it, definitely subsidized by the state and the community college. My problem is capacity right now, and I think we're full this year. But absolutely, as we train up new facilitators and folks who can deliver the course, I would say next year, I think we're running seven courses this year with two facilitators, and those facilitators have other 40-hour-a-week jobs. And so as soon as we can get a cadre of facilitators, I think next fall, we'll be ready to pretty much take anybody who would like to sign up for it. One of the things we encourage, just so you know, is that folks from the same entity try to sign up for different courses, because when you're all in that same course together, you feed off of each other. And when you're in a diverse cohort of other students, because there's a max of 12 to 15 per class, then you get the perspectives from other industries, other jobs, other ways of being. That's really a healthy infusion for your own growth. So just something to keep in mind.
I'm really glad to hear that. Thank you for all the work that you're doing in that area and really making it available to other institutions as well. And so we'll be talking to the city manager more about future opportunities.
That'd be great. I think we're good. Thank you, Dr. Murray. I appreciate it. Do you want a few more minutes to give a Running Start plug again? You've got a whole bunch of people up here that did it. No, I've got to go practice my song and dance. Okay, perfect. So thank you very much. Have a good evening. We're looking forward to that next year. All right, next up, we have an update on the Parks and Recreation Board, and I believe we have Blaine Land, the Staff Liaison to Parks and Rec Board, here to introduce our Parks Board Chair.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson and council members. I am delighted tonight to introduce our Board Person, Chairperson, to talk about the Parks Board updates, just to give you a brief overview of what our Chairperson, Whitney Nigobauer, is going to be discussing tonight, and she's going to give an update that will include takeaways of our recent Parks Board tour that was led by Park staff, along with certain projects and programs that are going on within the scope of work of this year and years to come. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and council. I'm here this evening to present a quarterly update from the Parks and Recreation Board. When you last heard from me, I shared some work that a subcommittee was doing to support the outreach efforts regarding the Inclusive Playgrounds Project with Harper's Playground. Since that time, the Parks and Recreation Board has participated in a number of activities and worked on some other projects. Firstly, I wanted to share that for the first time since COVID, the board went on a tour of Bothell's parks. Parks and Recreation Director Nick Stroup, along with Operations Manager Scott Purdy, Parks Planning and Development Manager Aaron Milner, and Recreation Community Event Coordinator Blaine Land, led the group for a full day of a tour around the city. Two of the biggest takeaways from that day were that our Parks Operations crews do an amazing job keeping our parks clean, safe, and beautiful. And two, there's so much opportunity to grow and expand and improve the park features that will serve a diversity of community needs. Our parks are truly a treasured resource, providing critical health and well-being services, and the enthusiasm and dedication by staff for these special places was really evident on this tour. The Inclusive Playgrounds Project has been a main focus of our work since the summer. We helped develop the stakeholder list and are continuing to build on this list into a robust resource to incorporate the many voices of our community into this very important project. We're looking forward to a community workshop November 9th, which will actually take the place of our Parks and Rec meeting. The subcommittee leading this work also identified some local and regional experts in child development and are working to find pathways to learn from these people and incorporate their feedback into the project. For example, the board is considering dedicating a future meeting to host community speakers to learn from their hard-earned and firsthand knowledge and learn about the factors that contribute to other successful inclusive playground projects. And as we enter the fall season, the Parks Board would like to express some reflections on the role that boards and commissions will play in the future, knowing that this is also a current focus of the council. We developed the following recommendations, which we believe will improve and enhance our ability to fulfill the current stated purpose of the Parks and Recreation Board, which is to advise council, improve communication between the board, council, and other boards and commissions to better collaborate, support, and guide the development of parks projects, develop strategies for board members to engage with the public, and build relationships to partner with nonprofits, businesses to leverage combined expertise and resources of the community. The Parks Board is continuing to refine some of these recommendations, and we will be following up with a written letter with some more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Nigobauer. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the update. Your work is really appreciated, and I'm excited to go on the 9th to the workshop, but also, when you have the meeting with, you said, child development experts, please be sure to extend that invitation. I think that's something a lot of people, either on council or in the public, would love to listen to, too. Thank you.
I would second that. I was also intrigued to hear you mention that you would be doing that kind of outreach and bringing in stakeholders from across the community, so thank you.
Yeah, it's one of the things where we have, you know, the Parks Board has a lot of expertise, but not all members are experts on all topics, so it's something that I know I personally would benefit from hearing from others who have gone through a similar process and learning from them in order to make really informed decisions about, you know, our parks that are going to be developed in Bothell.
Three things. Thank you. Stay the course. There was something else. I don't know. Just you guys are a force to be reckoned with, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo that and thank both you and the board for your work, and I always get really excited when I see recommendations coming from you to us, and I'm looking forward to deepening that communication as well. So just thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you. We look forward to working together in the future.
All right, next up, we have the City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two brief items, but all targeted at the same region of Bothell, and that's right outside. So tonight, on your consent agenda, there is a contract, it's Agenda Bill 23160, and it has to do with cleanup work at the Ultra site, which, again, is, as we look at the cleanup work that's taking place, it comes from a former dry cleaner site right outside of City Hall and down as you drain towards the park. What I wanted to point out is just by way of background, reminding council that you received an update about some of the next steps that were coming back in September as well as November of last year. There was a number of regulatory steps that were taken by staff, and recently, then, an RFP put out and a consultant selected. So that part is before council tonight for approval, but what I wanted to highlight for the community as well is that what this work is going to cover is a next to cover is a next step of remedial action as we start to really work to actively clean the site. The first step is appropriately Phase 1. That's kind of how that goes. And that's this proposed contract that's before council tonight. The nutshell of that is, is that this will cover shallow soil excavation at the former Ultra dry cleaner site and parcels, and that'll be taking place in the fourth quarter of this year, shortly after Thanksgiving. Following that in Phase 2, in the first quarter of next year, is focusing on drilling and injection of permeable active barrier walls with mixture to really start affecting, making sure things aren't flowing downstream. So that's all in your packet, and there's some more information. What I wanted to also just highlight again, to sort of take this out of that context and just put it into some other common words, is that we are also working through Public Works, but also with our Economic Development Manager, Jeanie Ash, doing outreach to those businesses that are potentially affected by this work in the area, so that they know what's coming and also have some information. So there's been an outreach plan that's been communicated to businesses, postcards sent to adjacent business owners, and then also, there's also going to be engagement over at the SHAG building as well, because we do know that residents who are right across the street from this are both impacted and interested. So making sure that we have some more information. I frequently get questions about of, when are we moving forward with that property? And we don't have an exact date, but a couple of things that we've learned from other property cleanups and development that has been going on is that, one is that we would recommend maintaining the course of getting a little bit more downstream around cleanup work actually taking place. The city remains liable for cleanup work, and so it's easier to do that before development than to start development and having to figure out how to balance and adjust. So that's something we're looking at. And then also, with the investment that the council's made in terms of visioning and development of the Park of Bothell Landing, particularly this impacts Lot EF and G, which is the corner lot just down on the intersection off of Highway 522. We know that there's conversations and interest in terms of how do we connect two sides of the community with the highway in between. And so also, making sure that we're taking deliberate steps to think about, what does that look like, and letting the park development take place a little bit more. So we're thinking this is a matter of years, not, hey, we'll get the next two quarters of work done and then see what can happen. So that's the plan right now, in a nutshell. I'm always happy to bring more information and how that's going as we go. So I want to transition to the next update, which is related to some outreach that we're doing about then short-term temporary activation of that site, otherwise known as lots EF and G. As council knows, recently, we started some engagement with a consultant called First 40 Feet of looking at potential activation. There's, I'll put upfront, there's no budget, no scope for this, but it is, we're looking for what could be, and wanting to hear from the community on that. And, you know, some of the options give us a picture then of how would that lot be used? Right now, it's being used for parking, and we've heard some feedback of, please continue that. Others are looking for activation. So we want to create options. Nothing that's being presented so far is like an actual plan that would then leap off the page and go get developed. They're concepts, and we're looking for feedback to help generate something that could be. Some of these concepts could translate to other areas of the community, some of other parks facilities and that sort of thing. But really, again, getting some vision and ideas from people. What I wanted to share with council tonight is that this survey, which is out on the city's website and was mentioned in the public engagement portion of tonight's meeting, it'll remain open until November 10th. So there's time for people to get involved in that. I've taken that survey as well, just out of curiosity of how it works. Some of the questions that people will be asked is primarily around, what do you like about this concept and what are your concerns? So we'd encourage people to take that time. It does not take very long, but I think those ideas and concerns will also help generate new ideas. And the goal for the staff is to have a final report from our consultant by Thanksgiving. Are people taking the survey? The answer is resounding yes. So this launched on Monday. Today is Tuesday, although it's sometimes feeling like Thursday, but I believe it's still Tuesday. And as of 9:48 this morning, so that's a long time ago now, we had received 1,003 responses on this survey. So it is getting, it's getting engagement. I want to point out for those who are attending in person tonight that we do then have display boards out in the lobby, and so that gives a picture of what we're asking for. And then again, there's more information in the survey online. I'll also just note that I was at a meeting in Somaish County earlier today, and, you know, I'm always ready for any question, but I was absolutely surprised when the first question that I received was, hey, tell me about that cool public engagement that Bothell's doing right now. And I was like, okay. So it's traveling around to other communities to see if there's people that are interested in what's happening. And it was another government employee, so they weren't like wanting to take it in terms of for themselves, but they were just noticing how this looks different and were appreciating the engagement and the buzz that it's creating. So thankful for staff for moving forward with that. I know that's been something that was a council conversation since before I got here. In fact, a meeting or two before I arrived. So it's been something we've been looking at, options, and I think there's some traction. With that, I will go ahead and close report. I do will just also thank individuals who have come. I think tonight, we have a large turnout for Bothell, and public meetings are always better with the public. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. And on behalf of the deputy mayor, thank you very much for the EFG presentation. All right, public comment. The city has accepted public comment and writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but on the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk, I'd ask if we have signups or visitor comment, but I've got a feeling we do.
We do, Mayor Thompson. Before we begin, I'm going to just state, and I'd like to remind commenters, that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask that if you are a council candidate, you do not use this time to speak to your own campaign. And before I start calling people up, we received a number of written, we have a number of people that are signed up to speak. I do want to mention the timer, so when we call you, you'll have three minutes to speak. We have a timer that will start, and it'll be green until you have 30 seconds left, and then it'll go to yellow. So the first, I'm going to go through the written comments that we received first. Mary Patricia Farley wrote regarding proposed land use, housing, and economic development. Alex Kaiser wrote regarding consideration of rental protections. Jerry Metodros wrote regarding support for rental protections. Mark Swanson wrote regarding the land use map revision. Sadia, who gave no last name, wrote regarding the humanitarian crisis. Anne Agard wrote regarding AB 23165 Housing and Economic Development. And now for the people that have already signed up. The first person I have is Clark Meek. Mr. Meek, if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name, and I know I just stated it, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Clark Meek. I'm currently the president of the Woodcrest Homeowners Association there on Brickyard Road, and I'm here representing them in support of the award for the design contract for the utilities development in our development. The item is currently on your consent agenda. I hope that passes. And just to let you know that we were developed in a number of phases by a number of contractors. So that kind of speaks in itself for some hokey stuff that's in place. I would like to express a thank you for working with your Public Works crews, and have developed a good working relationship with both the maintenance staff and your engineering staff. And we would encourage you to approve this contract and keep this project moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm going to apologize upfront. I may butcher some of these names. Okay. Next, we have Anne Agard.
City Clerk?
Yes. Excuse me. I think we have, we may have Shaikh online.
Oh, okay.
So Shaikh, if you're there, can you please use the raise hand function for us?
Thank you. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm not seeing him, but I just wanted to double-check. We have a number of people in the attendee room, so it doesn't look like they're there.
Okay. I'm going to move on to Anne Agard.
Anne Agard, 16524 104th Avenue Northeast. I'm speaking on the housing and economic development found on pages 231 to 248 in the packet. To comply with the GMA requirement for a housing element and the current Bothell, Imagine Bothell, housing element, the city needs to ensure the vitality and character of established neighborhoods. It is therefore necessary to add and include a fourth alternative land use map that implements current state law, HB 1110. State law states that all city lots is owned predominantly for residential use, but the proposed amendments would permit two dwelling units per lot, up to four units per lot if within one-quarter mile walking distance of a major transit stop or frequent transit stop, and four dwelling units per lot if at least one unit per four is affordable housing. This fourth state law alternative is scheduled for the Bothell City Council Consideration 2023 Code Amendment and Comprehensive Plan changes for December 5th, and the public hearing is scheduled for December 12th, 2023. Therefore, including this HB 1110 alternative for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan is a key priority and is consistent with the current council request for this year's consideration. Past housing trends and the state GMA requirements, HB 1220, which was signed into law in 2021, requires that Bothell has the capacity to meet housing targets across all income ranges with different housing types. The city keeps emphasizing the penalties associated with not meeting the capacities. In fact, the city is using 1220 anticipated penalties as justification for higher densities than required for recently passed 1110. However, city is doing very well with multifamily housing, and over the past 12 years, multifamily structures have contributed a greater share of housing units. Also, there is an opportunity in 2029, in five years, to review Bothell's progress relative to the countywide needs and shortfalls, if any, in 1220. So this argument is not valid. Finally, I would like to state that your Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Amendment does not include this item for tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Agard. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
It's Losh.
Losh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I rise to speak to the consideration of rental controls. Economics is a behavioral science that we all should be familiar with, and it very much pertains to this line of work that we're entertaining tonight. Whenever you restrict supply, the costs go up. That's a fact. That's not a belief. So anytime that you put controls on rents of any kind, you make it an onerous proposition for a landlord to make that investment, and that would restrict supply and therefore raise rents. Just the rumor of rent controls is going to have that effect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up this evening, Mayor Thompson. However, if there's anyone in the room that wishes to speak, please step to the podium.
My name's Mark Swanson. I moved to Bothell about 33 years ago, bought a house on West Hill in 1994. In 2022, Bothell had a survey, Bothell City had a survey, and over 60% of the respondents to that survey said they were against increasing density in Bothell. Almost two-thirds, depends how you add it up, median, average. In 2023, we had another survey put out by the city where only 8% of the respondents was concerned about affordable housing as a problem. In 2017, we were 4,000 residents ahead of the GMA requirements. We're even farther than that now, but the goalposts have moved. Let's talk about timing. When I moved in to Bothell, my rent was 25% cheaper than the median rent available today when indexed against minimum wage. There is no housing crisis. There's no affordable housing crisis. There's an equity ownership crisis. That's the problem. That's what should be addressed. There is no affordable housing problem. I have put forward scientific article after scientific article after scientific article to the planning commission and the council, over 40 links in all, and yet they have not chosen to engage a single question that I posed. I was trying to create a level playing field where we could come together and discuss the science behind what they're doing. When you cut down and pave over our native soils, you're destroying somewhere between 10 and 12,000 years of environment growth in the topsoil that exists. That provides how the city smells. It provides what kind of animals and birds we have. So when we're paving over all this pavement in the city, increasing runoff, et cetera, you're ignoring the science. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Yes, please step to the podium. I will state that I'm going to call on people that are here in the council chambers first, and then I will call on anybody in the virtual audience who wishes to speak.
Hi, my name is Gadir Bader, and I am a resident of Bothell at 39032 Southern Place Southeast. I'd like to comment on the statement that the mayor made. I'd like to thank you for that statement, because this is a human-like statement. I would like to comment one thing, though, that this is not concerning to people who have relatives there or people who originated from that area. This is a concern for all human beings, because basic human rights are being deprived for another human being. And those human rights include the right for basic food, basic water, food, water, and medicine, the right to move freely, the right to travel, the right to flee, and finally, the right of life. We have human beings just as like us are losing their life tonight as we are meeting. Their brothers and sisters are collecting their body parts to be able to recognize them, and all of that happened in a hospital where there were patients or people who were injured from previous bombs, or visitors of those injured, or refugees who could not find a better place, better than a Baptist church, sorry, Baptist Christian hospital where they can take refuge. So I thank you for considering that in your meeting, and I hope that you do more of that to make the-- to make the public aware of what's going on in the world, because we are part of this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience in the council chambers that wishes to speak? If so, please step to the podium, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Mayor Mason Thompson and everyone else here. I am Rana Sarhan. I have been living in the Bothell area for about 15 years. Before that, I grew up in Shoreline, and we chose Bothell for a school district. Beautiful nature, it's closeness to 405, easy getting to the east side. We just love it here. Being here today and listening to this statement from the mayor just kind of gives me life again, because of what I've been hearing in the news lately. I want to thank you for this statement that you read in support of all community members during this devastating time and heartbreaking time. It really means a lot, especially when you are seeing and hearing so many other issues, statements that are one-sided, ignore context, and even dehumanize Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims. We've already seen the dangerous consequences of that with a horrible killing of a sweet six-year-old Palestinian-American boy who lives in Chicago. He was stabbed to death 26 times in his home by his landlord. These are just what we're starting to see because of the news that has been shared, and I do have fear for my own children that go to the public schools here. Thank you again for calling. I can't even read what I wrote. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor, for calling for an end to the violence, speaking out in a fair way to support all of our city's diverse community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of people online that have raised their hands, but if anybody else is in the audience, please step to the podium and state your name.
My name is Martha Schmidt. I live at 15243rd Place Southeast, and I've been living in Bothell for about 15 years. I'm a retired lawyer, previous adjunct professor at UW-Bothell, teaching human rights. I'm here in support of the mayor's statement. I wish it would go further. I would really suggest that we have more dialogue about international law and our obligation to respect international law, including humanitarian law. There's been much misinformation in our media, including our local newspapers, and it would be a great opportunity for people to learn about the occupation of Palestine and international human rights law, and for us to come together as a community to actually promote international law and respect for law, which is not being honored in this community or in our country.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the council chambers wishes to speak? Please step to the podium and state your name.
Hello, everyone. I wasn't actually expecting to speak today, but I figured if there is a platform that I'll try my best. My name is Zarifa Barud, and I have been a resident of Bothell since I was maybe five years old. A little bit about my name. My name is Zarifa Barud. I was named after my grandmother, Zarifa. My grandmother was made a refugee in 1948 when she was expelled from her village Beit Rass, near modern-day Tel Aviv, and expelled to refugee camp in the Gaza Strip. So currently, all of my family lives in the Gaza Strip as of now, and they're in those same refugee camps, experiencing the heaviest bombardment that they have ever faced. As of now, I have lost 18 members of my family. So, Mayor, I genuinely appreciate your statement, and it's unique in the sense that it does acknowledge Palestinian humanity and the humanity of the people of Gaza. I would also encourage us all to go forward and realize that if there is a ceasefire, and I do hope that there is a ceasefire for the sake of my family, that that is not where peace begins. There is still an illegal occupation of the Gaza Strip and the West Bank. What Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, the United Nations deems apartheid in the state of Israel, being subjected upon the people of the West Bank. Until these things are taken care of, Palestinian people will never experience peace. So I hope that moving forward, we want a ceasefire, but we want more than that. We want Palestinians to have access to electricity and water and freedom of movement every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please step to the podium and state your name.
Hi, my name is Iman Hlaayl. I have been living in Bothell for seven years. I just want to add my gratitude and thank the mayor for his statement and supporting all the community members. I have family live in Gaza. I wake up every day trying to contact them, to call them. Sometimes there is connection, sometimes no. I just want to hear their voice. I want to hear they are alive, they don't have a piece of onion at home to eat, no water, nothing, no electricity. They have been living hard time. Thank you for your statement, and I wish everybody support the Middle Eastern people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak? All right, I'm going to move on to the people online. The first one I have is, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce your names, Anala. And I'm just going to panel you in at that point. Anali, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you so very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Anil Avzali, and I'm the Executive Director of the American Muslim Empowerment Network at the Muslim Association of Puget Sound, or MAPS. MAPS is the largest Islamic center in the Pacific Northwest. It's headquartered in Redmond and has branches in Seattle and Snohomish, along with congregants in cities across the Puget Sound, including in the city of Bothell. I'm also on the governing board of the Faith Action Network, which is a statewide multi-faith advocacy organization. And I join others who have commented already to thank Mayor Thompson for the powerful statement about the atrocities in Gaza and Israel, and I commend city leadership for the support that you are extending to all members of the Bothell community during this heartbreaking and horrifying time. In the last week, I myself have cried and grieved with my Muslim, Palestinian, Christian, and Jewish friends over the escalation in violence and the loss of human lives, including because of stories like Zarifa shared that absolutely broke my heart. Your statement and commitment to peace and well-being for all really, really means a lot, and we need more voices of leaders like yours calling for an end to violence and making sure that the bloodshed from Israel-Palestine does not have repercussions here in our state or in our cities, as we've unfortunately already seen elsewhere, as you heard, the six-year-old sweet Wadiya who was killed. I directly work on the ground to combat hate and violence, including countering Islamophobia and antisemitism. So thank you also for condemning both Islamophobia and antisemitism in your statement. A group of Washington Jews, Muslims, and Christians are working together on a statement for elected officials, faith leaders, community leaders, and others in our state to sign, recognizing the humanity of all who are connected to Israel, Gaza, Palestine, and beyond, and the heartbreak and horror that is being experienced now. At a time when there is so much polarization, it is more important than ever for us here in Washington State to unite on certain basic precepts and values that we should all be able to agree on regardless of faith background. That includes, for example, a commitment to ending the violence in the region and making sure that innocent civilians, especially children, are not killed, that hospitals and schools are not targeted, that hostages are released, that violations of international law and war crimes are not committed, and ensuring restoration of basic necessities to the people like food, water, electricity, and medical supplies, and of course, an end to the 75-year-old military occupation. Your message aligns with what we are preparing, so once our statement is ready, we look forward to sharing it with the council and hope to see many of you sign on as well. May we see an end to violence immediately, and may the voices for peace prevail over the calls for vengeance and violence and the drumrolls of war that are beating loudly right now. Thank you, and peace be upon you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Berger. Mr. Berger, can you hear us?
Hi, sorry, I'm new at this, apparently. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Dan Berger. I have worked in Bothell for more than a decade. I'm also the Jewish son of an Israeli mother and a member of the Kedima synagogue in Seattle. I came to the meeting tonight to hear how the city I've come to know so well would respond to the awful wrenching violence that we are witnessing in Gaza right now. And as a Jewish person, I'm horrified by the relentless bombing and the cutoff of food, water, electricity, and healthcare being done by the state of Israel against the civilian population of Gaza. I'm devastated by the way this war has sparked attacks against Palestinians, Muslims, and others in the United States, and by the stories I've heard from the Palestinian and Muslim community members and neighbors that I live and work alongside here in the Pacific Northwest. I want to thank everyone who shared their family stories tonight, and I want to thank the mayor for making such a humane and urgent call for a ceasefire that I hope other public figures in our state follow suit in calling for peace and justice.
Thank you. Next up, we have Razak Nazir. Mr. Nazir, if you can hear us, you can go ahead, and you have three minutes. Just one second here. Can you hear us?
Yeah, again, now it is unmuted. Thanks for unmuting. So my name is Razak, and I have been living in Bothell for around five years. And thanks, Mayor Thompson, for the wonderful, the way that you said the glad tidings to the people of Israel and for the people of Palestine who are in Bothell and who have been living here in a very good community kind of stuff. And I have been, I have been myself from India. I don't have any kind of connectivity with Palestine or Israel. And being a Muslim, I, as a single brotherhood across the world, I also know that there is a pain. It's not the brotherhood only that we preach about only for Muslims, but the humankind, the mankind, entire human being itself is a brotherhood. That's what we believe as a Muslim, and Jews, Christians, and everyone belongs to that group. So unfortunately, I have been to California, I've been to Georgia, Atlanta, all the places I have seen, but I chose to live in Bothell, and this is the exact reason why I chose to live in Bothell. And I brought my family after a year to make sure that they are also, also adjust to the way that they are conservative and they can be a part of this society, and they are there for the last four years, and they are happy to be here. And they are conservative as a Muslim, and they wear the proper dress code, and they eat what they want to do, they talk on the way they want to do. So far, we have not got any kind of discrimination, and this is very beautiful for them, because they are seeing a different world altogether in the US. And I really appreciate the community of Bothell and all the Washingtonians here. And yeah, so that's a very beautiful thing for us to say here right now, that we enjoy the precious freedom and the way that we can dress whatever way or look whatever way. We are not in a ghetto, we are not in apartheid, and we have been given the freedom to choose what we work and earn what we work, and the equality in all the aspect of the life, everything is good. Unfortunately, lots of people in the world doesn't have that. And sadly, the way that this current scenario is unfolding, it looks like whatever it is happening, it's not going to bring peace at all, first of all. People who are in, what do you say, a delusional case, telling that, oh, this will solve the problem of exterminating a set of people in a small piece of land, and then it will solve a problem, no, it's not going to solve a problem. And it has never solved a problem in any kind of world, whether it be because of the colonial legacy that has left behind the worrying factors of every country and everything. But what right now is happening is not only unthinkable, or it's like, just like all the other participants said, it's basically, basically, the basics is basically had been denied for last, what was, 75 years or 15 years or 17 years, or the way that the water or free food or whatever it is had been denied, and the way that this people who live in a ghetto and they do their atrocities or whatever way they want to call it, whether it's an unfair...
Thank you, Mr. Nazir. Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have...
Hope you can hear me? Just to confirm, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I just wanted to really express my gratitude and thanks to the mayor for his opening statement. Again, as a Muslim Palestinian who mostly commutes and works in Bothell, I'm part of the Islamic Center of Bothell, I feel a lot of comfort, and I feel reassured that we do belong here. We pray that this vicious, aggressive violence that is continuing to end ASAP, our community is experiencing a lot of anxiety, and your statement does give us hope. So wanted to personally say thank you for that.
Thank you. That is all. Oh, wait, we have one more. Couple more. Next, we have Bilal. So give us a second. Bilal Wahid. Mr. Wahid, if you can hear us, go ahead, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Bilal Wahid. I'm the resident of Bothell for the last six years. For that, I was in Redmond. I just wanted to say thank you to mayor for being the voice of fairness, reason, and calling for an end to the violence. And as Zarifa mentioned, that we need to do more than that. After the ceasefire, we need to look at the overall picture, why this illegal occupants of Palestine has been going for 75 years, why the international stakeholders who have the power, why don't they stand with the principles, rather than take sides? So unless we take those principles into account and take the due course of what the law says, we will continue to have these problems. But regardless of that, I really appreciate what mayor has said this evening, and it really helped ease some of the pain, and I hope there are more people who stand up and follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Harun. Harun, go ahead and start. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to join in and speak. I want to start by thanking the mayor for the statement that he's made. It's really, really important that we all are connecting at a human level, and we are saying and hearing the sound of reason all across, and people are able to connect at the humanity level without having to worry about repercussions one way or another, without having to worry about that they need to please to one side or being coming across one way or the other. So a couple of folks before me has mentioned that and appreciated that. I'm a resident of the city of Bothell for more than five years now. I'm here with my wife and two kids. I want to continue to live in this place, and these kind of actions and statements really appreciate as a family, that this is a place where I want to stay longer, and this is the place where we belong, and this is the place where there will be voice of reason at a humanity level all along. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I show signed up. Would you like to speak? Yes, please step to the podium, state your name. Yes, please step to the podium and state your name.
My mic's on, right? Okay. Hi, my name is Teja Dostri. Okay, actually, I shouldn't probably scream that much. Hi, my name is Teja Dostri. I have been a resident of Bothell for about a month now. I'm a freshman at Uta Bothell. And tonight, speaking here, I would like to extend an appreciation for all of you who have stepped up to the stand today and who have talked about the conflict ongoing between Palestine and Israel. Please, like, I cannot stress this enough. It's not my position to say so, but you speaking here tonight, your voice has been heard. I promise you, none of us are going to be out of the loop like this. For the events that are currently undergoing, there has been a lot of modernization, a lot of innocent killings that are currently ongoing and may continue going. So, for all of you tonight, I'm sure even city council can also agree with me and the rest of the city staff and the people here tonight who are not entirely, may not understand or may not be directly or indirectly involved with these events. We've heard you, the public has heard you. Your voice will not go unheard. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, city clerk. We are going to take a 10-minute recess. It is 7:11. We will be back at 7:21. All right, welcome back. I skipped over council committee reports, so we'll do council committee reports. All right, that was easy. Next up is projected agenda discussion. And we are going to look at consideration of rental protections, initial research and analysis. City manager.
Thank you so much, mayor, and good evening, council again. We, last meeting, talked a little bit about our council protocols. And one of the things that we have had some discussion on this year is around how to handle placing items of interest on the agenda. So tonight, we are trying something a little bit different. And that is, we had heard an expression of interest in looking at rental controls or rent control options from council member Dodd. And so have done some preliminary scoping as staff and placed a memo in your agenda. What we anticipate for tonight, then, is I'm going to turn things over to deputy city manager Tony Call to just do a quick framing, and then we'll turn it over to council member Dodd, who is the sponsor of this discussion. And what we'd be looking for tonight is council consensus on whether or not to move forward. And again, the deputy city manager will frame what moving forward looks like in this case. With that, I'm going to turn things over to deputy city manager Tony Call.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council members. Included in your packet, on page nine of your packet, you'll find a one-page memo from staff framing and outlining a body work regarding rental or tenant protections. So tonight, we are seeking direction from council on whether to have staff prioritize and study regulations related to such topic. As you may recall, council has received feedback from public comment as well as several emails regarding rental or tenant protections. And as city manager Stannard mentioned, we did get an expression of interest from council member Dodd for further discussion. If you direct staff tonight, staff would be able by March of 2024 to return with analysis and research. And that would include an environmental scan of what other communities have done. We would look at the impacts, both unintended and intended consequences of what they found through their work. We would also do an RCW legal analysis so we had a better understanding of what the box that we would be doing such work within. And of course, as we did our work, there's always other things that arise whenever you start researching something. And whatever those unknown things that I don't know today, we would include in our analysis as well. So, we believe that staff can complete this initial study of work within the first quarter of 2024. And we don't believe that this body of work, at least doing the initial research and analysis, would have any impact on your existing priorities or existing work plans that are happening across the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to council member Dodd. And again, we are looking for, from a staff perspective, we are looking to council as to whether staff should prioritize and study potential regulations and tenant protections. Council member Dodd?
Thank you, and thank you, deputy city manager, for that summary. We all received public comment through our email about, the thing that started for me was someone talking about a garbage valet fee. They moved in, they signed a lease, they had their budget worked out, and then another monthly fee that they can't get out of was sprung upon them. And I don't know the facts. I haven't rented in that complex. And one of the things that strikes me is that we don't have any renters on our council. Or on most of our boards and commissions, we have actually homeowners. So what I would really like us to do is, it is for your consideration, is that we take a look at this. We're not talking about rent control. We're not talking about, we're just talking about, let's make a level playing field. If someone signs an agreement to rent a unit, the cost should match what's in the lease agreement without fees after that. That's a really big thing for me personally. We've seen just so many letters about this and about other fees. I don't think that renters, given the housing environment that they're in, should be sprung with surprises. So I hope you'll consider it. And yeah, I'm curious to hear what everyone thinks. And it's really weird to talk first, so back to you, mayor.
Council member Aldrich.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, council member Dodd, for bringing this forward. Thank you, deputy city manager, for also reporting on this. I think this is an example of how it kind of takes a village to address various concerns that are surfaced in our community. I am grateful for the members of our community who spoke up and let us know what they're experiencing. And I think that their voices are really important. So, one thing I would request going forward, yes, I'm very much in support of studying this as an issue, understanding it better, is to make sure that we are bringing in stakeholders. And, you know, there's renters across the city, but there's also various community organizations that are looking out for renters and their interests. And so I would like to see that they're also included as stakeholders in future conversations and discussions. So, as you do your research, just please make sure to include stakeholders that should be included. So, thank you.
It's a...
Almost the last?
It's a short look when there's only four of us.
So, like, oh, I have to say it. Cross your heart and hope to spit, this would not impact any of our other priorities that we have, that body of work.
Doing the initial analysis and research?
Yes.
To be very clear on that point, doing the initial analysis and research and coming back to you in the first quarter of 2024 would be able to accomplish that with an existing staff load.
However.
If you needed something beyond that, when we come back in the first quarter of '24, we would have a better scope and idea and what this looks like, and we'd be able to be more informed at that point.
Okay, and you could tell us that if we move forward with it, what it might cost us in other of our things.
Yes, I anticipate being able to do that, but not today. It would be after we've done some work.
Okay. Well, you know, the garbage fee, I think, caught me off guard. And I can't imagine, if you're a renter, how that might catch you off guard. I know I've asked in our one-on-one with the city manager about that as well. We're all kind of scratching our head about it. So I would love to have the conversation. I would also, and you mentioned impacts intended and unintended. I really would like to know, when we talk about stakeholders, get people who are mom and pop, who are maybe renting a duplex? Or, you know, they have a rental property? What is the dynamics when we talk about decisions that we make? What happens to the market? Do we have people selling rental homes that now go to big conglomerates who are controlling? You know, I want to know all that information. So I hope it can be done by first quarter. But yes, let's have that conversation.
Councilor Dodd, I appreciate you bringing this up in response to the public comment that we've gotten recently. I too am interested in learning more about this. You know, as we talk about housing and the challenges associated with housing in our region, this just looks like one tool in the toolbox to keep people housed. Because quicker rent increases lead to displacement real fast. Yeah, I've seen what some of the other cities have done around here. People, places like Kirkland, things like that. And they seem pretty simple and basic. If you're going to raise the rent by this amount, you have to give a little bit more notice because vacancies are really low around here, and it takes a while to find a place, especially at the lower end of the market. So, yep, bring it back. We'll talk about it in '24. Feels weird to say that.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right. I would love... So I cannot speak when there is a little thing. Like, I just, my brain freezes. I would love a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilor Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from council member Dodd and a second from council member Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Passes 420 with councilmembers McNeil, Menke, and deputy mayor Alcabra, absent an excuse.
All right, let's go do a study session. All right, welcome to our new digs. First study session, oh, which did we switch? Okay, perfect. First up is Agenda Bill 23163, the proposed 2023-2024 mid-biennium budget update.
All right. We do have three items. I think the good news is what you have in your hand, too, has the correct order. So you should be all right.
Perfect.
Good evening, council again. Tonight, we are returning. We've had an update about the mid-biennium budget process, but tonight, we're going to have a study session. What I want to emphasize in the introduction is that we've been talking about how the mid-biennium budget is really technical corrections and some adjustments of its cleanup work. We do a two-year budget. That means things start in earnest like three years ahead of when the last dollar will be spent. And so in the middle of the budget process, there's oftentimes things that we need to adjust and bring those to council and have these conversations. One of the next steps after tonight, so tonight's study session is obviously a conversation for council, but also, at our November 14 meeting, we'll have a public hearing about the mid-biennium budget. And saying we're going to do technical corrections is one thing, but actually explaining what that means is another. So we wanted to make sure we had a study session ahead of the public hearing so that anyone at home following along, if they had any questions, would have some ideas of what's in there. I would say that this is as straightforward of a process that really, we're going to hear about everything of substance tonight. So this isn't just some generalities, but these are what you would expect to see. So with that, I am going to turn things over to our finance director, Mr. Kuan Wong. And he is here with his team to walk us through what the mid-biennium budget will look like this year.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor, city council members. I'm glad to be back again to talk about the mid-biennium budget. So before that, I want to again introduce our not-so-new deputy finance director, Andy Wa Chang. He joined us from King County and before that, from the city of Seattle. So I hope you have nothing against people from Seattle.
You've worked out great, so...
All right. And I also want to recognize Ted and Gretchen. They stepped up to be the acting deputy finance directors. And the budget before you is really their hard work behind the scenes. So I'm glad to be here. And this is really a mid-biennium budget that with really no major changes. This is a housekeeping process, and we'll keep it that way. So tonight, we are asking you to really give us feedback. I will walk through the different scenarios with you. But again, we're asking you for action tonight. There will be plenty of opportunities in November and December to do that. So we will go through what we are presenting to you. And again, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt us. So this is really the schedule that we presented to you last couple of times. So tonight is the study session. And on November 14, as city manager mentioned, there will be a public hearing required by RCW for a mid-biennium budget amendments as well as the 2024 King and Snohomish Counties property tax ordinance. On November 21, we will also come back to you to adopt the King County, Snohomish County property tax rate. We have to submit that before the end of November. So that's a critical timeframe. And on December 5, we'll be coming to you really to formally adopt the mid-biennium housekeeping amendments, the ordinance to adopt the 2024 sewer, water, storm, and surface water utility rates, and the Title 18 amendments. And lastly, but not least, is the 2024 fees schedule resolution. So what do we mean by housekeeping items? Again, no new budget is coming before you, but they are falling into really three buckets, or what I call them. The first category is really the general fund operating adjustments. Three major headlines is really really the general fund operating adjustments. Three major headlines is really following up on your decision back earlier this summer is to contract with Norcom for all the police 911 dispatch services. So you will see a revised position list or an updated list to reflect the dispatcher positions that will be obligated. We will also present to you some updates on the classifications, because throughout the year, we have had reclassifications. We will also include new grants that we have gotten since last December. The second bucket is about the capital project and programs. We'll give you the budget update, because there are projects that will require additional budget to fund, to fund the project. Schedule updates, and then other category. So, and Gretchen will walk you through the, the capital projects and programs. And last, the last so-called category is the 2024 rates and fees. The first one, as I mentioned, is the county property tax rates. We are still getting weekly updates from our two counties, so we won't know until when we present to you the ordinance, when, when we have it, I think on November the 14th. Utility rates, you were presented with your options. They will finalize the rates with the consultant and come back to you, I think, next month. And last one is, again, the fees, the fees schedule. Any questions so far, before I turn the mic to my colleague Gretchen to walk you through the CIP?
Good evening. So good to see you all again. So tonight, I am going to give you the mid-biennium budget updates for the capital projects and programs. There are 20 projects and programs that require a housekeeping update. And to help describe the budgetary needs, what we've done is placed them into three different categories. You can find the accounting details of the updates in Attachment 1 in your agenda packet. So I would like to give you a general overview. If you have questions at the end of this presentation, we are here to answer them. So the first category is budget updates. There are 10 projects that need additional funding. The funding doesn't necessarily all have to come from the city. Most of it will come through grant and other agencies. I will briefly describe three key projects listed under the budget updates headers. The first one is Ball Park's Fields Lighting to LED Lights. The total estimated cost is $1.4 million. The funding for this is a combination of secured and budgeted funding, including American Rescue Plan Act Parks Levy and asset replacement fund balance. The second one is 102nd Avenue Northeast and Downtown Access Project. Construction cost is higher than estimated, so additional funding is needed. Staff applied for a federal grant to fund the construction and anticipates to be awarded a $900,000 grant in November. Lastly, Shop 1 Building Replacement. Construction cost is higher than estimated, so Washdaw is committed to fund the additional cost. The second category is schedule updates. Six programs and one project are listed under the schedule updates header. Funding needs to be shipped from one biennium to the next to continue to fund projects within the original budget due to COVID-19 impacts, weather delays, and things that didn't get done in 2022 in last year's budget. The last category is called others. Three capital projects listed under the others header do not fall under either budget or scheduled updates. 35th Avenue Southeast Drainage Project, the city applied for and received a $1.9 million loan to complete construction. A federal grant was initially considered, however, this financing opportunity provides the means necessary to fund the construction in the most efficient and cost-effective way. The loan will secure funding, and construction can commence as planned in 2024. Bothell Operations Center is currently without a long-term backup power generator. The total estimated cost for the generator is about $991,000. The city applied for and received a $741,000 grant. So water, sewer, storm, and street funds are committed to, as match, in the amount of $225,000. Lastly, staff is proposing to budget the construction of the training tower, utilizing a combination of project cost savings of $400,000 and available fund balance in fire impact fees fund to reduce the needed general fund line of credit. The impact fee revenues have accumulated faster than originally anticipated. It should also be noted that fire impact fees are a restricted funding source, meaning that the funds can be, only be spent on qualifying expenditures, such as the newly constructed fire stations. A brief presentation of the training tower project is shown here. The estimated cost for the training tower construction is about $700,000, and this is part of the original project script. The training tower will enable firefighters to, one, complete required trainings. Also, we can have a training towers in Bothell as opposed to using the one in Kenmore. And also, it meets needs for increased training. The completed, the completion date of the training tower construction will extend to spring 2024, if the funding resources are appropriated in the mid-biennium budget. And that's all I have for right now. Do you have any questions about the capital projects and programs?
One thing that I'll just highlight, a number of these changes that you're hearing about are creative solutions. So I hope you caught that context, that these aren't all, we're adding more money. It's really shifting money around. And one that I want to circle back to, and we can stay on this slide, but on Slide 5, we talked about the North Creek Ballfields. And in that case, there was some available parks levy from King, funding from King County, and what it's allowing us to do, it noted the Phase 1 and 2 combined, but really accelerates that replacement. Instead of doing, in, in, over two, two years, two programs, some are just two disruptions, doing it all at once, being able to also replace the controls that go with lights, because the different types of lights take different controls. So it really is a, an efficiency that I think will also help the community be able to go out and enjoy those fields with new lights not much sooner. So just, again, these are some of the things we wanted to highlight in terms of the why do we do this? Because new information comes along and new opportunities come along, and we want to take advantage of them.
I just wanted to say thank you. The, the new grants, taking advantage of King County Parks Levy Funds, like, that's really good stewardship of our city money to, to make sure that we're getting all the help that we can to get cool things done. So whoever applied for these things, please give them high fives, or whatever is appropriate in this workplace. But that's awesome. So, thank you.
So, so thanks to the Parks Department staff and the director. So they have done a great job in finding the money.
And they always do.
One thing I, well, two things. On the backup power generators, something when you're out talking to citizens, they talk about how they just want the basic needs of the city met. And the, you know, they'll bring up items of, of, you know, in a time of crisis, we want, you know, we, we love the flashy things, but we want money to be prioritized for things that are going to be really important to us in a time of crisis. And this generator is one of those things, you know? We just look at a generator and go, it might be pretty and shiny, but it doesn't have a lot of community interest until we really need it. So I really appreciate that. And then the fire impact fees have to be used, or they have to be returned to whoever paid them? Is that correct?
They're restricted for qualifying expenditures. So it's, it's recommended to tap into those funds first, before any others. Because yes, it's a good idea to use them within 10 years.
10 years.
Because after 10 years, they go back to developers or payees.
Okay. And not, and not to make the developers or the payees feel like I'm not, I'm gunning for them. But are there funds that are from the fire impact fees that do need to be used? Otherwise, we're close to having to return them? It's a busybody question, I'm sorry.
I think the issue is that there are only certain, it has to be a fire-related project within your capital facilities plan, and to my knowledge, we, and to my knowledge, we only have one of those.
Right, right. So we better make hay while we, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen and Ted. It's like old times. I just have two questions. I know that we allocated money from the general fund to finish construction of the fire stations, and I believe we were going to be using future fire impact fees to pay that loan back to the general fund. Will this affect that?
It'll actually reduce the amount that the, that the project will need to borrow from the general fund. More, I think when this was all, when the plan was all developed, I think they anticipated having $400,000, $500,000 worth of fire impact fees built up. Well, they have over a million. So let's, so let's use that money first, rather than have the project have to borrow from the general fund. The impact fees are there now. That's what would be used to repay the loan anyway. Go ahead and spend that upfront.
Oh, cool. So we're using these impact fees instead of the general fund money that we had allocated previously?
Instead of a portion of it, yes.
Oh, that's awesome.
This is correct, because if you have to use the line of credit, that means that amount is not available for other general fund purpose expenditures.
Perfect. And the King County Parks Levy Funds, was that, is that the same funding that was originally earmarked for a trail at Wayne? Or is that something different and new? Sorry, Nick.
I see the parking.
So the money that we have allocated for this project is actually the annual allotment that we get. It is separate from the Wayne Golf Course.
Cool. Thank you. Those are the only two questions I had. This looks great. Thank you.
Just a couple more slides.
Just a quick preview of things to come. As the finance director mentioned, the annual property tax levy ordinance is due to the counties by the end of November. The ordinance that will come before you is the affirmative mechanism that the city uses to declare what amount of property tax levy it wishes to levy. The, just a reminder that the adopted budget for 2324 assumed a property tax levy that includes the allowed 1% increase plus an allotment for new construction. If we were to go to the next slide, I think we have a couple charts with some historical data for both Snohomish and King County, and a breakdown of kind of where a taxpayer's taxes go in each of those counties. And I guess I would just point out that the beige area on both of those charts represents the piece that the city gets, only 18% to 20%, roughly. There's a lot of other agencies that make up the majority of that tax bill. So more to come on, I believe the public hearing is November 14th. As the finance director mentioned, we're getting updates on assessed valuations and everything from the counties on pretty much a weekly basis now. So we'll have more firm numbers for you then. So stay tuned.
And so, because we're only raising it on the, we'll call it 20%, roughly, the actual impact to Bothell residents on their property tax would be 0.2%, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay. Perfect.
It all, it all depends on how much new construction there is and where assessed valuation goes. You'll see in the charts down below there, as the median home value rises, that means assessed value for the whole city is rising, so your levy rate goes down. Those are inversely related. Because you're allowed to levy what you're allowed to levy, which is 1% on top of what you previously levied. Yeah, exactly. More to come.
Cool.
So the last slide, again, in the spirit of housekeeping amendments, so the last two is going to be the utility rates, and we'll be coming back to you. The Public Works Department will be able to present their recommended rates in the next month or so. And the 2024 fees schedule, right now, we are asking departments to give us, you know, their analysis. But overall, I think in most cases, the increase will be only catching up with inflation. So the CPI as of June was about 4.5%. So you will see across the board, an increase of 4.5% to reflect inflationary increases. And that's really a summary of what we are going to come back to you about. So for tonight, if you have additional feedback on the items presented, please let us know. Again, you know, we can be also contacted via email and chat.
Sounds great. I'll chat you if I need anything. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Agenda Bill 23165, Land Use, Housing, and Economic Development Comprehensive Plan Priorities. I'd kick it over to you, but like, I feel like we should almost wait until they get here.
We're getting, we're getting closer.
No rush.
That's right. That's fair. And we're gonna, we're gonna settle in on this. So I will, just for, again, for anybody who is following the meeting but maybe wasn't watching at the beginning, within the published materials, we did make a switch between items B and C. And so our next topic is Agenda Bill 23165, Land Use, Housing, and Economic Development Comprehensive Plan Priorities. Counsel will note, and again, one of the changes that we have made recently is that the public will also be able to follow along, and that we have been publishing PowerPoints four o'clock on Mondays. So hopefully folks have seen that link on the agenda that's published online. Tonight's PowerPoint is substantial. There's about 40 slides, and each of them have some value. And there's a lot of graphics to follow along with. So we're pleased to have those out for, for everyone to be able to follow along at home as well. We also felt that the swap in order will also help support the, the next item, which is then on sidewalk outreach and prioritization. This is more of a getting your brain flowing in that direction. So we hope that this also helps that final conversation tonight. With all of that, as the slides start moving their way up into the screen, we do have a team with us here from Community Development, and I am going to turn things over first to our senior planner, who you're getting to know better and better throughout this year, but Kirsten Madsen. Kirsten, I will turn it over to you.
Apologies, I had a Zoom joining error, so I'm getting back in the meeting right now.
Do you need a moment? We can, we can take a quick pause.
Moment. I should be able to get us going. Now, of course, my PowerPoint's not working. I don't know what my issue is right now. It's just blank. Yeah, I would appreciate that. I'm having, I'm having some technical issues.
All right. It's 7:58. We're going to be back at 8:03. All right, we're back. And better than ever.
Thank you for that. Apologies for the technical difficulties. So as city manager mentioned, we're going to be talking about the comp plan tonight, specifically the land use, housing, and economic development elements. I'm joined by our Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan, and Andrew Bjorn from Burt Consulting. We have a new timeline slide now that we're into the end of 2023. Kind of can't believe it. We're deep into reviewing the existing conditions report. That will be going into the assumptions for the EIS. We're in the midst of goals and policies development with the consulting team, and we'll be reviewing those internally as we get deeper into the fall. And then, again, starting those early efforts on the EIS work that will continue in through to the end of February. And then ongoing engagement as well. Big event for us is next Thursday. Again, mark calendars for the comp plan open house. We're getting further and further to completion on all the details. We're getting really excited about that. Again, there will be free edible cookie dough and ice cream. So plug for that. Again, there's going to be activities for kids. We're partnering with the Imagine Museum in Everett. And there'll be childcare as well, and it's up at Skyview Middle School. I will also be holding just a tabling event for Trick or Treat on Main Street. It'll mostly just be me sitting and taking questions. So if you're out for that and want to talk, I'll be there. I believe that runs from 5 to 7. I will also be attending the Civic Saturday Session on November 18th. We will be sort of the last hour of that session, so feel free to come and go as you please, and then we'll be around to talk questions. Same thing in January at the 20th session, or January 20th session. And then, early, early plug for the second open house, that's likely to be in March, and it'll probably be in City Hall. Upcoming meetings, obviously, we are here tonight on the 17th. Upcoming meetings, obviously, we are here tonight on the seventeenth. Upcoming meetings, the next one will be Planning Commission on November first. That's to talk about subareas, most specifically to what we're kind of colloquially referring to as Red Barn, but is the current Country Village, Lake Pleasant, and Bothell Everett Highway subarea. We'll also be talking about the cultural resources element, formerly known as the Historic Preservation Element, and urban design. And then the next council session, we'll be talking about the new climate element, the natural environment element, shorelines, and parks. This slide is really just to show the connection between the city vision and the comp plan. You can see I've marked all of the topic areas because land use, particularly land use, but also housing and economic development, really do touch the community all, all the ways they could. So just acknowledging the breadth and the importance about these topics. Quick overview of tonight, we'll be getting into some information, some sort of geekier data side stuff about housing trends. We're gonna be talking about how the Office of Financial Management does their projections, and a little bit about what GMA compliance means in the context of the comprehensive plan, talking about the existing conditions and potential changes to the economic development element. Quick recap on just what we've discussed so far regarding land use methodology, best practices, some of the feedback we've heard from this body and from Planning Commission. And then we will be getting into the Future Land Use Map Alternatives, a new acronym for us. We're enjoying to say FLUM. Feel free to use that. And then just a quick note on next steps to expect with this topic and other comprehensive plan topics and our upcoming meeting schedule, which we already talked about. So you can ignore that last bullet. So again, no specific action tonight. We're really just looking for feedback on the land use map alternatives most of all, and then also trying to identify priorities for land use, housing, and economic development as we're developing the goals and policies and some of the language in those sections of the comp plan. So I'm gonna turn things over to Director Greenspan to just, again, reiterate this discussion around what is land use, what is zoning, how do they differ, and how do they interact? So with that, I'll pass things over to Jason.
Thanks, Kirsten.
Quick interruption real quick. I've got two things. Number one, I just want to say thank you guys again for providing childcare at this event. That's a really big deal, and I really appreciate it. And a second is, stop trying to make FLUM happen. It's gonna catch on.
It could be Fluma if you're including the alternatives.
I'm not, I'm not a normal mayor. I'm a cool mayor.
So we'll be rolling around in the proverbial land use and growth weeds tonight and talking about the FLUM. But first, I wanted to talk and just explain what we mean by a, a land use map to begin with. What is the difference between that and zoning? So just taking a step back, a land use policy map is the big picture map, and it's adopted by you, the City Council, for the comprehensive plan. And it shows in really general terms what different areas of the city should be used for, like stores, homes, parks, offices, or some combination thereof. It's colorful. It helps visualize what parts of Bothell are for living, shopping, playing, working, and it guides the overall vision for how Bothell should grow and develop in the future. But it leaves detailed rules and regulations to zoning, into the zoning map. And it sets the policy basis for that zoning. So when we talk about zoning, it establishes the rulebook for each individual piece of land in the city. It sets specific instructions for what you can and what you can't do on a particular property. It enumerates permitted uses, how many units you can put on a property, how much square footage a building can be or can't be, what the setback should be, how much lot coverage you can have. And it uses the big picture land use map and other comprehensive plan policies as the guide. And the zoning map classifies each area in much more detail than the FLUM. And together, the comprehensive plan, land use map, and the zoning map and zoning regulations help shape how, as a city, we're gonna grow in the future. Next slide. So in case you didn't know, we have fifty-nine zone districts in the city, and that's very unwieldy for a comprehensive planning map or comprehensive planning process. But what we have done is try to crosswalk some of those zone districts and kind of collapse them into larger land use categories. And what you see here is a way to illustrate how we've done that. So for example, we've identified the R seventy-two hundred, eighty-four hundred, ninety-six hundred zones of that kind of size with lot sizes as that minimum, as our low-density residential area for the purposes of the comprehensive plan land use map. You'll see there, we treat them the same for the purposes of the comprehensive plan by color, but they're adjacent to each other and they are distinct zones, and that will remain so. We don't plan on collapsing the zone categories necessarily. So this is one way to show how the land use map treats multiple zones as one land use category. Next slide. And so for reference, our current land use element does have, as adopted now, those specific high-level policies, one of which is to define land use densities and intensities and allocate land use to ensure capacity to accommodate forecasted growth. And that land use element right now is available on our website, and it's been in place since 2015. Our zoning code, which as I mentioned is much more specific, is housed in Title XII, and it says exactly how that growth that's envisioned by the comprehensive plan can happen in our fifty-nine zones. And the detailed zoning map is going to remain a critical piece of implementing our comprehensive plan. With that, I'll hand back to Kirsten.
So now I'm just gonna get into a little bit of information on some of the past housing trends we've seen in about the last twelve years, a little bit of background on, again, forecasting growth targets and some of the new requirements we have with part of HB twelve twenty. So these charts are using what are called Form A data from Office of Financial Management. Every year, we report to the Office of Financial Management on our permitting information, units completed, and there's a bunch of different aspects of that. These charts are showing the structures that have been permitted versus the housing units that have been permitted over the last twelve years. And I think the, the thing that stands out here is the blue on the left versus the green and the blue on the right in the simplest of terms. We've generally permitted far more single-family structures than we have multifamily. And however, multifamily structures have contributed a lot more to our housing unit growth. That has started to increase more over the last twelve years, but it's, it's still, again, contributing a lot more than single family. This gives you a sense of the current mix of residential housing, both in Bothell and within some of our neighbor, our neighbor jurisdictions. You know, as you can tell, we're about a mix between predominantly single-family, little bit less of multifamily, but very small amount of some of those middle units. And we're actually doing pretty well when it comes to manufactured housing versus some of our, our neighbors. And this is in acreage for land use. This is another comparison chart. This is about housing unit growth. This also comes from the Office of Financial Management, but this comes from their post-sensual estimates. So it's not as specific as the Form A data, but we still thought it would be kind of illustrative of how we've done in terms of housing unit increasing in the last, from 2015 to 2023. And then a little bit about growth targets. So as I mentioned, the Office of Financial Management creates growth projections. Those are based on three primary factors, being the birth rate, the mortality rate, and net migration. They set these targets for the next twenty-year planning window. They start as population and jobs targets. And their methodology for assigning them within the different counties includes a number of factors, like past trends, transit, a few other things. So then the counties will select from those different targets. There's a low, a medium, and a high projection that they get from the counties. Typically, most counties will pick the middle, middle projection because it seems to make the most sense. It may not be higher, may not be lower. Let's go with the middle. And then the counties work within themselves with all the jurisdictions to come up with a way of assigning those targets. And there's a division of those jurisdictions based on size. So we're in the core city size. It's the second largest. Metropolitan size is like Seattle, Bellevue. And we kind of have to work together to agree on targets. There's some methodology and some parameters that make sense, but then a lot of it just comes down to whether there's maybe some city goals. I know one jurisdiction said, well, we want to have a better mix of residential and jobs. Right now, we have a lot of employment. We'll take on some more of the residential growth. So that's kind of that, working together within the counties. And now what's new? So as, with the passing of HB twelve twenty, our population target is now a housing unit target that also includes affordability requirements. This chart, I wasn't sure if I wanted to include it because it's a little confusing, but I do think it's important to speak to the guidance from Department of Commerce as to how we will show compliance with HB twelve twenty, given that because it wasn't a funded bill, we don't have the ability to actually just go out and build this housing. So the way that we show compliance is that we have capacity for the housing types that could potentially be affordable based on subsidies or incentives. The example I have here is an example chart for a high-cost jurisdiction, which we consider Bothell to be a high-cost jurisdiction. This isn't necessarily exactly what our version of this chart would look like, but it gives you a general sense of what are the housing types that are feasible at scale to provide affordable units with those subsidies and incentives. And you can see, at least with the example provided from the Department of Commerce, those are typically your two-to-three-story apartments and condos, your walk-up buildings, and then mid-rise multifamily with high-rise towers potentially providing more for moderate income. And this is important to consider when we're looking at what our range of housing need is and our target that we're paying attention to. Okay, what are the kinds of housing structures we need to focus on in order to meet our goals? Very simple chart. This is just our job targets for King and Snohomish County. We're at a deficit in both counties currently based on our capacity. So that's something we're taking into consideration as a part of the Future Land Use Map Alternatives. And these are our housing unit targets. What I do want to point out is, if you add up the total between zero and up to eighty percent AMI, which again is that lower affordability range for the two-to-three-story building walk-ups for your more kind of moderate-scale apartments, that's roughly about seventy-five percent of our total target. So that tells us, well, we are maybe not doing great in that housing structure that could potentially provide affordable units, again, with those subsidies and incentives. And so we definitely need to pay attention to that when we're looking at our land use alternatives. So some past trend and target takeaways. So like I mentioned, our historic permitting trends show predominantly single-family housing structures permitted while contributing significantly less to overall housing units. And this is probably contributing to the fact that our growth targets are distributed the way they are when it comes to those mid-range multifamily units. And I was curious, when it comes to making sure that we show compliance, what would that mean for us if for some reason we weren't able to show compliance? It's not common for this to happen, but there is a kind of a number of ways that sanctions can be applied. I did get some information from our lovely Finance Department about, you know, if for some reason this did happen, what would that mean for funds? And it turns out it is quite a bit of a lot of the funding we get. It also means we wouldn't be able to vest a majority of permitting types. We'd kind of lose our vesting ability, except for things like boundary line adjustments, some minor TIs, and then owner-occupied initiated new construction for single-family and renovations. That also means you wouldn't be able to apply for any state-level grants. So. And all of this is important for GMA because it mean, we want to make sure we're all working together and doing what we need to do to meet the intent behind GMA and regional planning. So I did want to pause there because that was a lot of information. And before we get into talking about the land use maps, I want to make sure we're kind of on the same page about what I all just, what I just talked about. So.
Thank you. I was hoping you could elaborate a little bit more on what not being able to vest the majority of permits means to maybe someone who has never applied for a permit personally?
Yes. So vesting basically means when you apply for a building permit. And Washington has a very specific vesting law doctrine that I won't get into the details of. But when you apply for a subdivision or you apply for a building permit, basically the date at which we've received a complete application, and that term is important, complete application, the regulations in place at that time are the ones that apply to your project. So if we're not able to take in and vest permits, we pretty much can't take in permits because we can't provide any kind of clear guarantee that we'd be able to review those against the regulations in place at the time at which that complete application is received. So it would have pretty significant impacts to the work that the current side does of community development when it comes to project review.
So thinking about sort of real-world consequences of that, it sounds like, and I'm hoping you can fact-check me here, that people would be a lot more hesitant to develop in Bothell if we can't guarantee conditions, we can't vest permits. Like, that seems like there would be a lot of consequences down the line on that front.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So question, because we've had some public testimony. What is the, the timeframe? Because we're looking to get this done ASAP, and people are saying, we have until 2029. So what is it?
Yeah, so to review for compliance, there's a couple different things. Part of it is showing to Department of Commerce that we have the capacity in our proposed regulations to meet our targets. So that is a part of this approval process through next year.
So, okay, so the timeline for them is 2024?
Yes, we have to comply with Department of Commerce in order to be. I think they, correct me if I'm wrong, they review after adoption. I don't remember all the details of that process, but.
So why, why, why are we thinking 2029? We have till 2029.
There is new state legislation that was adopted in the past couple of years that now requires a five-year periodic review, is sort of a midpoint between the ten years that is typically in place, and it's basically to assess performance. How is a city doing in meeting its housing targets across all income levels? How is it doing across climate goals, transportation goals? Sort of a mid-cycle check-in that is required. And so we wouldn't get technically all the way through 2033. And we're doing this the next time, and we've realized we've gotten much further behind. That five-year point is a check-in from the counties essentially to say, how is Bothell doing in meeting its targets?
So your feeling is, is that we need to finish this by 2024 in order for us to do our check-in by 2029?
That's right.
Okay. And then I, I have a lot of notes here, so if I start to get ahead of you, you just give me the time sign. I would love to, on slide seventeen, you said you, you hesitated whether or not to include this, and I have in my notes, please get a hard copy of slide seventeen. And I would love nineteen. I don't know how I go about getting that. If it's included in our next packet, you have slide seventeen and nineteen where it ends up being a hard copy, that would be fantastic.
We can also make sure that, that copy is made available to you in the council office. No problem.
Whatever's the least clunky, I would appreciate it.
It's easy.
Okay, okay. And then I do have some other questions, but I'm gonna let you continue. And then if you don't mind, if some of my questions, when we, you know, get to the end of this, our review, then, then I won't worry about jumping ahead on the questions.
Yeah, there's a couple other points I plan on kind of pausing just to be, just because those sections kind of are almost standing alone until we can move on, so hoping that matches up.
Okay, okay. But we may be doing some reviewing. I'm just warning you.
Sure.
So I really do appreciate this presentation. And yeah, it's forty slides, but also, I think, forty important slides with some really, really solid data in here. One question that I have about the 2024 approval process, that, like, we have to be, it is actually very typical, from what I understand, that if you're gonna put out a, like, a government plan, that it does actually require approval from like a governing body, which in this case is the counties. So it doesn't surprise me that there is that step in saying, hey, you know, you've told us that we need to do this, and here's our plan to do this, and that they would actually then be able to provide comment on that. Say, for example, we do create a plan that shows that we would not be able to hit our targets, or if we created a plan that is kind of iffy on the way that we say we'll hit the targets, what happens? Like, what kind of feedback would we expect?
I'm not sure I have a, a good answer on that because we're not planning on getting to that place. But if you'd like. But if you'd like a little more information on the sort of steps of the approval process and sort of the recourse, I could put something together. Generally, even if, you know, the other side of the things is if you haven't met your targets, there's what's called reasonable measures that you can sort of make adjustments to, to get there. But as of right now, I don't know for certain, for sure what that process would be.
I don't know exactly how curious I am to understand that. All I know is that my, my kind of motivation is to make sure that we stay in compliance, which I know is yours. And then next up is, ooh, I'm not trying to move around slides, I'm so sorry. Oh, I think I just moved around a slide. Does it? Okay, good. I don't want to do that for anybody else. So Slide 19 has some really great information on it. I'm wondering, can there be a more visual format of this instead of kind of raw numbers? That, it seems to me here that we sort of have, like, a distribution of different housing types. Could we see, like, this in a bar, a bar chart of some kind? I, I know that it would help me kind of visualize what it, like, which group we're actually having to prioritize target, and I would be able to better understand, I think, the needs of each group if I saw it that way.
Yeah, and so part of this work that we have to do is developing what's called a housing needs assessment. And so that's basically evaluating for the city of Bothell based on our housing stock. What does that mean for us when it comes to these different divisions? So that's something we're working on right now to say, "In Bothell, this is a housing type we think would fit into these categories." And so that's something I think we can provide when we've completed that work. And that's part of the compliance with DOC is showing them, "Hey, we've done this evaluation. This is where we think we are when it comes to these housing types, and this is what we're proposing to show compliance based on that."
Yeah, I think that would be really a good place for that information, and I'm gonna look forward to seeing that. And then also, kind of back to Slide 18, I realize that this is a pretty, pretty vague projection in terms of job targets. I realize that, you know, we don't have state legis, like, state legislation telling us that we have to break this down by AMI, but I really would like to understand kind of, kind of a snapshot of, of what types of jobs can people find in Bothell? And what kind of AMIs? Ooh, somebody's excited.
You're teeing this perfectly up for Andrew.
Okay, I can't wait to see that. Because I realize this is sort of just like an intro to it. But, so if you're saying that that's coming, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
I have a quick question on that. If we're looking at 18,000 or so jobs, is 13,000 housing units enough for the people that are gonna be in those jobs?
I'm not sure that the housing targets take into account the balance of workers that live here versus that commuting from here. I know that the proportion of workers that both live and work in Bothell is actually quite small. It's predominantly people that live outside Bothell that come into work in Bothell in terms of our mix of employment. And I'm not sure if there's any analysis that's been done to answer that question.
I would, I guess I would just be curious, are there places that have more housing targets than job targets? Because I've only ever seen more jobs than housing, and that seems like a problem because people want to live somewhere.
Yeah, there actually are some jurisdictions. This came up as part of the buildable lands review and the setting of the targets. If I recall correctly, I think there's some jurisdictions around the Bell Red area that have more jobs than housing, so they have kind of the inverse of what we have. So that's part of that discussion, we're allocating targets. Some of the jurisdictions said, "Well, actually, I want to take on a higher target of this because we want to create that mix a little bit better."
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I mean, I can show you a chart that demonstrates the ratio between employment and population for Bothell and for surrounding communities, if that might help, just to give you an idea.
This was more of a curious thing, and this is gonna be a long night anyway. Can you email it to me?
Perfect. I can do that.
Thank you.
To all of us.
Yeah.
I mean, if everybody wants to see it, let's throw it up there.
I want to see it.
Yeah, I just need you to stop sharing, and I can just share it pretty quickly. It transitions to the next topic. So, I know, it's amazing. Yeah. So this is, this is the ratio between covered employment and population. So covered employment, it's a state-level measure that draws on employment that's covered under unemployment insurance. So there are some jobs that it doesn't cover, but this kind of demonstrates that Bothell is actually above the average for both King and Snohomish Counties in terms of the jobs, the jobs in the community versus the population of the community. Woodinville's very high, but, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a different animal, but if you're looking at other communities like Shoreline and Kenmore in the area, they're very low. It's, they're more of, I don't want to call them bedroom communities because I don't want to disparage anyone, but they have a larger share of residential land use and residential units versus jobs.
Thank you. I'm glad you showed us that.
And I still would love to see that in email. Thanks.
I would also love any data you have on, I'm trying to figure out how to say this. So the impact of having, you know, more jobs per resident versus less, like, what that looks like in the community, to understand if we shoot for this target or that target, what does that make Bothell look like long-term?
That's a really complex, complex question. I, I think, I think it depends on what specifically you're talking about and the kind of employment that you're looking at. Because if we're looking, for example, at employment in retail, that has different effects than employment in manufacturing, based on finances and all that. So it's probably worth a deeper, a deeper discussion, and we can talk about it a bit in the next section, I think.
Before we move on, I do have one last question that I overlooked in my notes. Kirsten, you mentioned that usually counties pick middle projections. Is that what happened in, well, in Lucky Bothell, we are both counties, so did both counties do that this year?
Yeah.
Okay. Then can cities opt to, can they, can we preview or see what the higher projections were? Could we choose a lower projection or a higher projection based on, or we have to stick to only? I guess we would have, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know that there's any room to change that at this point, since it's sort of up to the counties. But I don't know what that process would even look like if at some point...
I guess it doesn't make sense to say that a city says, "We're gonna go do that lower projection that you included," because that, you can't. You have to either meet or exceed. So my question is then, is it possible for a city to exceed or aim for a higher projection?
I don't know. I don't see why there would be any reason that we couldn't try and go beyond our targets if that's something we wanted to do. But I also know that there become some issues with regional planning trying to account for growth if cities are proposing to way exceed their assigned target. That gets into transportation modeling and a lot of other potential issues that would come up with the Puget Sound Regional Council's work if we were to waver off the side of what the projection allocations were.
That's, that's helpful perspective, so thank you.
All right. So then, before we get into the land use maps, I wanted to talk a little bit about the economic development element. Staff chose to include this as part of the discussion tonight since they are pretty First is to just talk a little bit about growth trends over the past 10 years. We've had a good amount of growth. This is consistent, I believe, with King County's average growth rate. We're a little bit above them. We have quite a good mix of job sectors. They're relatively well-balanced, and we've seen that steady growth and that continued balance within those sectors. I did want to point out a couple acronyms that I should have provided a key for. FIRE is Finance, Insurance, and Real Estate, and WTU is Warehousing, Transportation, and Utilities. And then in terms of the local context, sort of how we look in comparison to some of our neighbors, I'd say we have one of the better mixes of different uses. Woodinville has a bit more in the construction resources sector, but overall doing very well. We have a strong manufacturing sector, and we've seen a little bit of growth in construction and retail and education over time, and are continued pretty strong manufacturing sector. And for us, it's mostly light manufacturing, recognizing the importance and value of our biomedical industry locally. This is a slide I'm going to pass over to Andrew to explain.
So, excuse me. So when we're looking at the local economy, one of the things that's important, that can be important, is to just compare Bothell with the rest of the region. What this is, is a, like, a three-parameter location quotient chart, which is, it, it sounds very complex, but when we're talking about this, the vertical axis there, that's 2022 location quotient. Anything above a 1 means that the percentage of jobs in Bothell is higher than the percentage of jobs in the region. So what it means is that, for example, you know, finance, insurance, real estate, education, and manufacturing jobs are, have a higher percentage here than in the region overall. If we're looking at the horizontal axis, that's the change in the location quotient over the past 10 years. So that gives you an idea about whether Bothell's becoming more like the rest of the region or whether these jobs are becoming more concentrated. And then the size gives you a rough indication about the number of jobs in the, in the major sector. So the thing to point out is obviously manufacturing. That is both concentrated in Bothell far more, almost twice as much as in the region overall, and, you know, it's a pretty sizable sector, and that, that concentration is growing. This is not, this is by far not the only chart that you can make, but it does kind of tell a very interesting story when it comes to what's important to focus on with, with the Bothell economy.
Thank you. And then this slide is really to just talk about some of the areas of focus we've been discussing in terms of the revisions to the economic development element. One thing we've heard again and again is really looking to focus on some of those more nodes, those neighborhood and activity centers. The image on the left is from our current economic development element. You'll notice there's a number of different types of centers identified there. Some are kind of more, I would say, official than others. For example, obviously, our Regional Growth Center is a very specifically identified center, but we have some sort of other looser nodes, and we figure that would be a good jumping-off point to kind of develop this concept of neighborhood centers. We also have two candidate county-wide growth centers, one in each county. One is downtown, and the other is the Snohomish County portion of the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, Bothell Everett Highway subarea. Again, we're taking into account some of the results of the Urban 3 analysis as we're reviewing all of this. Of course, we need to make sure that we're meeting our new employment targets. We want to emphasize, like we are throughout the plan, increased emphasis on equity and climate change-related impacts, and we want to make sure we're consistent with the Economic Vitality Plan that's begun work. We've talked a little bit too about, maybe there's some potential changes to home occupation regulations that could help strengthen those neighborhood center concepts. Another topic we've brought up is what are some regulatory changes or policy shifts that could help increase the ability for small-scale craft industrial or manufacturing uses to come into the city? And then, as is happening with all elements, we're having a separate implementation plan, so we'll be pulling those actions out into a separate plan that'll help us with the five-year reporting that Jason mentioned. And it'll also, I think, help us be much more intentional about when we say we're doing, taking an action, do we have funding for that? Do we have potential funding for that? What are the metrics of success for that action? How do we know when we've completed it, and what is the potential timeframe for that? So those are all things that we can include as part of an implementation plan that's separate from the element itself. So before we get into the land use discussion, I wanted to open up time to talk about economic development and see if there's any feedback on that point or any thoughts.
I have a quick question about the neighborhood centers that we're looking at. Are we gonna be zoning for, like, small-scale retail in those?
So that is kind of a later discussion, once we have to really get at what is the sort of land use, land use alternative methodology that we want...
Got it.
...before we can start evaluating the zones.
Cool.
And so that will come later in the discussion, once we've reached what we call the preferred alternative for land use. Then we can start looking at, are there potential changes to the zones themselves that are needed? Are there potential changes to the zoning map that are needed? So, again, kind of more to come on that space.
Perfect.
A brief comment. I would love to see that as a city, we, our manufacturing, you said we're above our, as we compare ourselves in the region, we're above on manufacturing.
We're concentrated.
Yeah, we're concentrated on that. I, but we're also very heavy on services, and I just think about when we have economic downturns, services usually is the first to take it in the chops, and I understand services is a big, broad category. But I would love to see us as a city encourage things that are tangibles, like goods, maybe even manufacturing, but really things that make us resilient when the economy has difficulties.
Thank you.
I also would like to better understand the slide and, you know, conversations around neighborhood centers. I feel like before I'm really prepared to talk about a land use map for neighborhood centers, I, like, I would need to understand more about our neighborhoods. That is one of our priorities that we, that the council outlined, and we said that we would do, we would, there would be parts of our vision and priority setting that would help us better understand the breakdown of neighborhoods across the city. And for me to talk about areas of focus, I think I would need that information to inform this process, if that makes sense. And I don't know what the time, I don't know how those timings overlap and what's possible there, but I know that I'd, I'd want more information about neighborhoods before I determine or understand what the centers are.
Yeah, to back up and affirm what she was just saying, we had a comment today about how it's, I took notes here, wanted to have a direct quote here, that GMA requires us to ensure vitality of established neighborhoods. And I wonder sometimes, in this focus, are neighborhoods get treated with too broad of a brush and not the individual care that they need? So yeah, I would like to second the, the focus in on understanding our neighborhoods well and, and protecting those things that need to be protected.
Yeah, and I did want to mention too, the, the map that was there, that is from the current plan, that's been there for quite a while. And I believe that those sort of loose boundaries were identified based on the existing uses that are there. So that was just why we thought, well, that way could be a good jumping-off, off point, since it's already there, can we think about ways to kind of leverage what's already, what's been in place for quite a while? So, yeah. All right, well, before we get into the future land use maps, I did just want to spend a little bit of time, just as a refresher on what we talked about back in July. So again, some of those best practices and staff recommendations and methodologies, and then also sort of what we heard from this body. So again, just brief overview on some of those best practices. We talked about the use of color. We talked about simplification, creating that very clear relationship, as Jason was discussing, between the land use designations and the implementing zones, making sure that we're taking a look at existing and future facilities and development, that sort of proximity and patterning and scale being very important, and then taking into account the, the value of the natural environment and some of the impacts that land use has on that.
Sure. I had a note on this slide. What is color? Are we talking about just the visual of... Are we talking about just the visual of, of how we use color to understand the vision? Okay.
Yes, so the colors for the land use designations that Jason was discussing, just to really make it really illustrative for the viewer of what is where, basically. And then again, these are slides you saw back in July. So just a refresher on some of the, you know, big moves we're thinking about in the context of these changes. So one, recognizing that because of HB 1110 and 1337, as well as our housing targets and the types of structures needed to get at those, there is this transition away from a single family throughout the city. We're also looking and making sure again, that the infrastructure and land use is sustainable, that we're taking into account future development needs. That's some of the work we do with internal staff that work on utilities and infrastructure, that we're minimizing costs and impacts as much as we can, and we're integrating climate resiliency. And then as we've been mentioning, just some of the streamlining, simplifying and clarifying the rezoning process. Again, so there is that clear relationship of we're setting this policy level decision for what we potentially want to see in a place. What does that mean when someone wants to come in and ask for a rezone? And then again, that simplification of the land use map, separate from the zoning map. Again, we're looking at the regional growth centers and the countywide growth center requirements. That's some of the sub area we're planning, planning we're due in primarily country village, but also a little bit downtown, since it's also a candidate, although we think we're pretty much closer to that, those requirements than in country village. And then again, looking at some of those potential neighborhood center policies, looking at the value of equity and quality of life in all of these decisions, the improvement of amenities, considering the full range of different community needs. And then environmental quality, so addressing important natural and critical areas in the city and looking at some sustainable building practices. And then again, just a refresher on some of the feedback we heard from back, back in July. There was a general agreement on increasing the ability for neighborhood scale commercial access. I believe everyone agreed that we want to make sure that there's adequate density for family scale housing near schools, looking at providing density on arterials, not just major highways, providing amenities near business parks, offices and other office parks, taking into consideration pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure as part of the land use mix, especially now we have our new bike plan. Making sure we're listening to community feedback on what are some of their short errand routes that they might be taking that might make an impact on some of these changes. Providing more clarity on HB 1220, considering the potential for reducing traffic impacts as part of land use. And then just the value of the continued education and outreach component as we're talking to folks, making sure they're understanding all of this, we're hearing from them and we're able to kind of close that feedback loop of providing information. So with all of that, I will be turning this over to Andrew. He's going to talk us through the maps that he's been working to help us develop and the sort of differences between the, what's the no action alternative, which is basically for us taking our current land use map, but making it into a true land use map, and then our two action alternative drafts. So I will give things over to Andrew.
Great, thank you. So we're going to be kind of giving you an overview. I know that you have taken a look at these maps already. There are some minor changes in them. We're not going to cover absolutely everything that's been changed, but if you have any questions, please by all means raise them and we can, we can address them as best as possible. So one of the things that we want to highlight with these different maps is that we're, we're trying to get to a systematic understanding about how to move forward with land use planning. The no action alternative that's here is not necessarily an option going forward. We wanted to provide this because of requirements under SEPA, but it doesn't represent what we would be doing going forward. It does not include the considerations from HB 1110 and 1337 that would allow for additional development on individual sites, especially in what, what is in that map in the yellow areas, which would be current single family zoning. To highlight this too, what's in play is not just with 1110, which is what's been discussed before, but also with 1337, which essentially allows for two ADUs on a site. It allows for potential condominium minimization of those units and separation from the main lot. So all of these need to be considered as we're going forward into the land use alternatives, especially with respect to the impact that they'll have on land use targets. So what we're assuming with this as well, you know, again, more as an overview, we're not running with different targets or future growth assumptions aside from what we've already talked about with growth targets. So we're not, we're not making the assumption that we're going to be growing more than what's in those growth targets themselves. Given that Bothell is divided between King and Snohomish Counties and given that we have housing and job targets and given that we have, I'll get into the income targets in a minute, but given that we essentially have four different targets for growth in the city, this can get a little difficult. So we use those as control totals. So we're not, we're making the assumption that we're not getting growth beyond those in order to test for capacity. When we're examining this, though, the other major limitation or other major constraint that we're looking at is, is this going to address the affordability targets that Kirsten was talking about before? Will we be able to provide the units at zero to 80%, 80 to, 82, I always get confused, it's 80 to 120 and then 120 and above. So we want to make sure that as we're going forward, these maps are hitting those targets as well. The problem with the no action alternative, if we did nothing and we just kept on going as if 1110 and 1337 didn't happen, is twofold. One is that we're not going to be able to achieve the housing units that would be required at the lower income bands. So looking primarily at more multifamily development types as well, and this has already been a part of discussions about buildable lands reporting, there isn't necessarily enough job capacity to take on the targets that, that we were looking at before. So there needs to be some consideration, both of how do we address those needs at different income levels? And how do we, you know, accommodate additional job growth in the region, in the, in the community? So, yeah, and then one other thing to note with these is that, you know, we're talking about these in terms of the growth targets, but these are also, as Kirsten had mentioned before, these are being used as inputs for the transportation modeling and for other infrastructure modeling that's being done. So understanding about whether or not we have the systems that are necessary to support the distribution of jobs and of employment in the area. So that's, that's also something to keep in mind is where, as we're moving through these, so. So the neighborhoods alternative is one where, actually one, to take a step back, one thing to note first is in both the neighborhoods alternative and in the centers alternative, which we'll talk about next, there are areas that have been identified for increased density through changes in the color, essentially. So primarily looking at changes from the residential low designation to the residential medium designation. And those are primarily identified as ways of achieving those income band targets. So shifting more towards lower scale multifamily types of development that could accommodate more affordable, units that are affordable at some of the lower income categories. So this is something that if we're looking at the neighborhoods alternative, what we're making the assumption about here is that we're pushing more of the growth towards the, essentially the yellow and the orange and the, yeah, the yellow and the orange areas. So we're concentrating, we're, we're not only increasing development allowed within those areas according to 1110 and 1337, and we're redesignating those. We're also increasing them beyond what would be required from 1110 and 1337. So what that means is that more of those targets would be accommodated in those neighborhoods. That doesn't mean that mixed use development and multifamily development in the mixed use areas in, in the Red Barn area and in other locations wouldn't account for some of that capacity as well. It's just that more of it would be taken up by the neighborhoods. Now, this is something that's important to talk about as well when we're discussing building up our neighborhoods, because it's not simply just a matter of saying that there's increased density. There's also the increased ability to support small scale neighborhood retail in those areas. If you can get more people in these neighborhoods, you can get more of a customer base that can support small scale retail. So, yeah. So the other alternative, and this is the same map, it's not different, it's just changing what some of the colors mean. So in this, the requirements will not change that much from what's currently allowed under 1110 and 1337 and the designations for kind of the residential medium areas are, like it's less intensification. This would involve putting more residential growth targeted to more affordable income categories towards the purple areas. So this does have the advantage of, you know, encouraging more nodal and corridor growth, focusing more on mixed use communities and potentially even kind of additional nodes of development at a scale that's almost similar to what you would find in the downtown. The challenge is that it's focusing a lot on centers and corridors that are along arterials. So it's, it's, that's kind of something that we all have discussed before in, you know, the trade offs between focusing a lot of growth towards the arterials versus focusing growth more evenly within the neighborhoods. This is, again, I mean, these two alternatives are really not intended to be, you know, the final alternatives that we're looking at or even where we end up as a final kind of land use strategy. These are intended to generally bracket what the, like where the growth should be going. Now as well, I mean, this is also associated with changing some of the regulations in commercial areas to allow for more intensive commercial development, to allow for fulfilling those requirements and, you know, accommodating additional commercial growth within the, within the centers. And then we have included some, some elements of kind of job generation within the neighborhoods just to account for the fact that there could be small scale retail or home occupation uses in those locations. We don't necessarily want to call that out as, you know, designating individual parcels as being purple or anything. We don't want anybody freaking out that we're going to be rezoning their house or anything, but that's included in these considerations.
And then just before we get into the discussion, I did want to provide some of the feedback we heard from Planning Commission. What we heard from the majority of them is, of them is they did prefer the neighborhoods approach, both for the balance it would provide in terms of where new housing is directed. And then some of them had some equity concerns about potentially continuing to provide more affordable housing along highways and corridors that do tend to have more air pollution. And they did also want to get some more information on homeownership, traffic, climate, transit, equity, gentrification and displacement in the context of the alternatives. We don't have a ton of really detailed information on that right now, since that's really one of the evaluations that comes out of the EIS analysis process, but did want to know that those are things we heard and are going to look at reviewing as part of that analysis. So we'll get into the discussion and then I would have a slide just showing the maps so you can see them both together. And again, this is the no action alternative on the left and then the right is the action alternative map that is for both of the action alternatives.
Can I start?
Yeah, go.
Cool, thank you. Just initially, I will say that I'm more drawn to the neighborhood centers or neighborhood over the center alternatives. Don't want to mix up terms and confuse people. And, and that's because I think it's more consistent with our vision setting, that we really do, we have decided that we want to better understand our neighborhoods and, and sort of know what their identities are and how, and how they kind of show up and contribute to our community. And I think that that is one reason to go for neighborhoods. The other one is, oh gosh, back on slide 31, we talked about density near schools and family scale housing. And I'm looking at these maps, at the, at the alternative map and seeing that a lot of our schools have no changes near them and that they're remaining the kind of lighter yellow. And I, I cannot say that I understand the implications of everything as well as you guys do. That's why I really appreciate you. But if we were to really commit to this value of density near schools and family scale housing, what is the process that would convert a light yellow area to a darker yellow area so that, you know, an area like, I'm not just speak for my neighborhood because I live in West Hill. So if West Hill, north of the high school there, were to become that darker yellow, that would help us, one, meet that goal of density near schools, having family scale housing. I see a lot of traffic getting concentrated in our neighborhood because the families who have kids can't afford to live in the neighborhood that they're assigned to the school in. And I'm also recognizing that we live really close to downtown and it, aside from the giant hill, it is quite walkable. And we also have, we're really near to the university and the college as well. And so I guess my, like, and I wish, you know, the deputy mayor were here as well, since he's also a resident in a kind of different section of West Hill, but it's still broadly West Hill, to see what, what his thoughts would be. But using West Hill as an example, I just kind of wonder why we're not doing more to commit to those values and also recognizing that if zoning changes are required, how this would not be the time or the place to do that. So what, what would you tell me with those thoughts?
I can speak to, I can speak to part of it. Actually, would it help if I showed this map? I can zoom in on some of the areas here. I can take you on a bit of a guided tour of some of our thinking here. Just bear with me as we switch over. So, and please forgive the differences in the colors here, and I don't even know if this is going to be a bit laggy here. One thing that I want to kind of draw people's attention to is that one of the larger considerations that we had here was that we were looking at the potential that there'd be a transit corridor down 104th here. And that the designation of these areas would also be paired with the, the schools in the area. So looking at those, that, that's, that's one of the main areas where we were thinking that that discussion about upzoning around schools would apply. The same thing to a lesser extent with Bothell High School here as well. If we're looking at kind of how it transitions into the downtown, encouraging, you know, potential additional density in these areas could be a benefit. It does get a bit challenging in certain areas because we did need to make a certain, because we did need to make a certain, you know, a few different calls on smaller-scale areas. Where it becomes a bit more of a challenge if we're looking at other locations, and you will forgive me if I need some directions here to, to get to some of the other areas that we were discussing.
So you were right there.
Right here?
West Hill is north of Bothell High.
Okay, great.
Yep, that's, that's the strip.
Perfect. Yeah. So I think one of the considerations here was also with respect to, if we were to change the designations, how much additional yield would we be getting in these locations? And is it able to be accessible and serviced by transit? So it's certainly possible to have the discussion about whether changes in the designation would work. It's just that this was an area where we were, where in discussions, it seemed as if it was a little less feasible than in other locations. But I absolutely agree that giving some thought to more density in these locations makes sense. If we're talking about the neighborhood alternative, then we would be getting additional density in the yellow areas beyond what's currently allowed. So that would be building up these locations. Just that we also want to be just conscious of the fact that we need to think about transit services. We need to think about, you know, maybe not in this location, but in other school locations in the community, transportation accessibility and things like that, so.
I'm glad you brought up transportation, and that's a really kind of clear reason why 104th is, is getting that designation. One of our other priorities in council's vision setting was a circulator bus for Bothell. And so thinking about how those two kind of overlap, I realize we are maybe very far away from figuring out what that looks like or means, but I, I do know that the last circulator bus that existed in Bothell did go on 88th North through West Hill. And so there, there could be, in the not-so-distant future, improved transportation in that area because we're talking about it. Okay, so just my thoughts.
Oh, and did you want to cover the other portion of the question?
Oh, the zoning question?
Yeah, or did I?
Do you have thoughts? I mean, I think that we can take feedback.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, there's feedback on zoning that might sway one alternative versus the other, that's certainly something we could hear tonight and potentially integrate into whichever alternative direction we kind of end up going.
Are you done? Awesome. I would agree with the neighborhoods. The more we spread out growth, the less of an impact it has on any individual neighborhood. And, you know, it's a departure from what we've done for decades, which I like because we hear a lot of feedback, especially during campaign season, about residents who haven't liked the results we've gotten from the growth that we've had. And I think we owe it to them to at the very least try to do something different so we can get some better results for them. And I, I like the direction this is going. It also gets away from just bluntly highway-oriented development. I mean, you know, we're talking about 20 years out here. My kids are six and eight. This map determines where in Bothell my kids might be able to live someday. And I'd like them to have the option to live someplace that's not right on a highway.
I have a question, similar to Councilmember Alder, it's about my neighborhood. So I'm in Queensgate, like way on the bottom right. And that, so just to write, right there, to the right of 405 in that little yellow low, that area, that neighborhood right there. There's a middle school and an elementary school right there. There's going to be a flyover to the Brickyard Park and Ride for BRT someday. And there's residential activity center. So there's like a little neighborhood, you know, little store, little quickie mart kind of thing right there. I'm struggling to figure out why that's a low-density neighborhood. I'm saying, please upzone my neighborhood.
Great, okay. I mean, I, I think that, something else to point out here too is that we were concentrating on the big moves.
Yeah.
On looking at areas where it was obvious that you could make a big change. As we're going through public engagement, people are going to come out and say, why is my neighborhood purple or orange or yellow? Or, you know, if they're colorblind, it might be a little bit different. But when we're talking about all this though, we do need to get feedback on this because there, there are smaller areas where I know that I don't have, you know, the in-depth knowledge of the neighborhoods that you live in like you do. If we're, if, if our team is trying to figure out whether certain areas should change, you know, folks in the community are the best ones to tell us what makes sense. So, so great.
And that, and that's going to be part of what we're doing at the open house as well. Well, obviously we'll have the maps and we'll be collecting feedback from folks and letting people mark things up and seeing, seeing what people think.
Cool. And also if we do this and people come in and say, why are you doing this to my neighborhood? I want to make sure we're doing it to my neighborhood too. So I'm right there with them. I do not want to look like my neighborhood is treated separately or different in any way, shape, or form.
Sure. You are, you are a brave soul. Okay, so some of this may be backing up. Going through the agenda, while both the, the slides were great. When Kyle said there were 40 slides, I took a deep breath and then I waded through them and they were, they were great. So it was great to have a preview and I'm glad folks can have access to that. There, there was one slide that it struck out at me of showing Kirkland and Linwood just booming on housing, housing that they put, that they've just had exponential growth on. And so I decided to go look at stats and then, and found out that Kirkland is almost 18 square miles. So I thought, okay, that makes sense. It's a bigger city, physically bigger city with about 90,000 population. So that might tweak the numbers a little bit proportionally. And then Linwood is basically a flat city, not a whole lot of hills. I thought, okay, so that makes sense for them as well. On page 234, there was a comment right in the middle of the page that says, we also have a target for net new emergency housing needs. And I saw the word emergency. I was like, emergency? What do, what do we mean by net new emergency housing needs?
Yeah, so essentially, emergency housing is whether there's some kind of a disaster or there needs to be like a large, isn't it?
No, that's, it's unhoused.
Well, I think it's, it's both, I believe.
I think it's just meaning for.
Okay.
Just unhoused.
I'm gonna agree with Andrew on this one.
Rock, paper, scissors here.
My understanding is the goal of that is making sure that we don't have regulations that preclude the sighting of emergency housing. I'm not sure if Andrew maybe might be able to speak to how the actual number gets achieved at. I have not been able to find that specifically in the guidance, but.
Okay, well, that's kind of, there's, that's a little different. I mean, both of those things are a little different.
Yeah, it's, there are different, again, I hate to say it's all complex, but there are certain other considerations about special housing types that we're not covering here that we could talk about in depth at, in other sessions. When we're talking about shelter space, for example, though, the main consideration here is that, like Kirsten was saying, we're not precluding shelters from being located in certain locations under state law. You know, there have been some changes to make sure that cities can't completely exclude them from the community. So.
Okay, that helps. All right. So then moving on to page 235, I, I promise I'm going to try to go quick here. And sorry to make you guys go through this. On 235, there was a comment that cities need to show evidence by 2024 that they will have land zoned to capacity for their targets. And is there other, when we talk, when they talk about targets that we're getting, do they put anything else as consideration for growth targets besides just land? Do they look at, do they look at, you know, any kind of major roadwork? Or, or is it just strictly through a land, available lands, lands?
So there's a couple of different elements of that, and this is related back also to the buildable lands work that we do. So they look at available land of that land, what is considered developable, what is critical areas that wouldn't be able to be considered developable. There is also what's called a market factor applied. So understanding, yeah, we have this much capacity available, but is it all realistically going to develop in that timeframe? Probably not. So there's a number of different factors that go into determining capacity.
Okay, that's good. That's good. Instead of just looking at straight land. And then two questions on page 237. This is the danger of putting a link for us to go look at. So it's a, it's a little bit of a rabbit trail. I hit the link on economic development and one of, on EDA 28 was explore the potential for creating an annual City of Bothell Achievement Award. Have we ever had that discussion?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I have.
Anybody who would find that in there.
I know, I know. I just thought, that is a great idea. And I haven't heard of anybody who's won that.
And as a part of my own review of the existing plan, that question has come up on a lot of different things. I'm like, huh, is that a thing that we do? Is that a thing we did do?
Yeah, it's a great idea. You have been.
I can just add that every comp plan in the state has all of these weird condition of like.
This is a good weird thing, though.
Statements, and it's explore and consider, and nobody ever intends for it to happen. And it's just included in there because people would like to have it.
That's a shame, that's a good one.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. But whether or not it should go into the comp plan is a real question because, you know, it's, I, when I was in planning school, I went to a community that did their comp plan on one page, and that's nice.
Just short and sweet.
Yeah, they didn't have the same requirements in Washington State.
And this is what that five-year check-in is going to be about when we put in an action item. And the implementation plan, we kind of need to mean it.
Okay, well, I'll be keeping an ear out for the annual City of Bothell Achievement Award then.
Yeah, and that's a perfect example of why we think an implementation plan is important because then it's something we know is actually realistic and achievable and actually also supports the policies and goals that we've set up, yeah.
Right, right, good point. And then a second question down here. I'm just going on notes that I made in the past, so I'm hoping they still make sense to my brain. Supporting the Economic Vitality Plan through goals and policies of the economic development element. Who all is helping with creating the, supporting the Economic Vitality Plan? Who are the players that we are using for?
So I believe Jeannie Ash is leading up that effort.
And who, who else is Jeannie bringing into this?
Councilmember, I'm going to let Deputy City Manager Tony call and respond to that question.
Thanks, City Manager, Senator. The Economic Vitality Plan is actually established by your council priorities. It has several key elements attached to it, and we are currently working on a scope and an RFP that would go out and help us actually do a broad-based work on the Economic Vitality Plan in accordance with your priorities.
So my question is kind of the cart before the horse right now.
Yes, it is. All right, okay, thank you. And then the other, the last, the last question slash, no, I have two comments, sorry. Almost the end. On page 238, I see environment quality, and I would love to see environment include both the social environment, the human social environment, and the nature, nature environment. The aesthetics that has that human component to it, and then the nature environment. And then I, this is just a shout out to our Planning Commission. I think you had a summary at the end. And that, and the paragraph on page 240 says there was an opinion that the neighborhoods approach would be more equitable, which gets back to your question that you just posed to us, by not relying on denser housing in areas that already have denser housing. So I, just a shout out to them for making that comment and observation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the note that perhaps comp plans can be a little bit aspirational, and it's good to bring seven dreamers down to earth and make sure it's not a dream journal, but something we can actually do. I agree with everyone who spoke. And I think that really the, the neighborhoods alternative makes sense. I think it's pretty fair to say that most of Bothell is sick of growing just in really small pockets. And so the only change we see in our neighborhoods is very large change, more ways to grow incrementally as people redevelop their own lots versus someone buying up many and creating a big new neighborhood that overtakes. It's just, it's, that's how we've done it. And that's, I feel like, you know, we've heard from a lot of people in individual neighborhoods as projects are considered that are like, why here? Why now? Why do we have to grow so much right here? You know, so I really think that that honors a lot of the feedback we've all heard. And that's, that exact problem is why I even got interested in joining the Planning Commission to begin with personally. So I really appreciate it. And I wanted to, I know we're, we're ahead of it, but just the neighborhood scale retail is, it's something that I enjoyed growing up in Queensborough, not Queensgate, different part of the city for you, Andrew. But, and right now we don't have our neighborhood scale retail really, so I'm missing it. And I really look forward to other neighborhoods getting that option and giving. I, I always think of, just before I could drive, being able to just walk and go get, you know, spend my $5 that I got for whatever I might have finally done around the house. And even just, oop, sorry, just taking a walk to go get a treat at the end of it or go get a drink or whatever, get outside your house. It, it just adds something to your routine that really isn't duplicated by having to drive to a store and make an intentional trip. So, love it.
Thank you.
I want a study session, but I just jumped in first.
I'm just going to go real quick, the quick, because, because I'm going to have some angry people. There was a request for a map that, a fourth map that would show, that would show the, where the regulations for HB 1110 fall, if I understand their request correctly.
I think that map would be the no-action alternative.
Well, it's like no action, but keep us in tune with state law. I'm curious.
But we're looking at land use maps, not zoning maps. So that would be the no-action alternative, I think.
But at some point, could there be a map that showed, for people where they could go and see where those things would fall?
I'm going to shut up. Oh, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I, I did want to sneak in and say, I do, thank you for the reminder. I, I'm curious about that because I wonder if just doing that minimum, because I think of it as like a, it, it's a change, but it's also like a no-change alternative, right? And I wonder if we would meet our obligations. So if the answer is a flat no, then I don't necessarily want staff to have to jump in to do all the same analysis if they're, you know what I mean? Like, it's worth looking at, but if it's, if it's not going to do what we need it to do to keep compliant with the GMA.
I think what we'll do is, let's follow up. It's 9:30 on a council meeting night, and so asking a yes or no question of if we can do something. But let's, we'll talk about it and get back to council and get a response of what we can offer. And we'll make sure that that's then communicated out publicly too. So I don't want to avoid the question, but I also want to make sure that we can actually go back, listen to the request, understand what you're asking for, and give you an informed answer.
Yes, thank you, because I'm not sure if it was necessarily a no-action request that was coming from the public.
Hi, just wanted to echo what Councilmember Dodd said about walkable retail. And I know we've brought this up a couple of times and it's probably for a later conversation, but I want to emphasize it. Like, I think it'd be really cool if everybody in Bothell could walk down to a corner store and get a gallon of milk or some eggs and make breakfast.
All right. Is there any other comment tonight that you'd like to provide or? Okay, great. I'm always available by email. If any other thoughts come up, feel free to email me, call me, or as Kwan mentioned, you can chat me. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. You want to take a few minutes before we do our last study session? You serious? Are you okay with that? 10 minutes. It's 9:26, we'll be back at 9:36. Oh, we're waiting for me. All right, last study session of the day is Agenda Bill twenty three one six four, the twenty twenty three sidewalk outreach and prioritization update. City Manager.
So I'm going to turn my microphone off because that's what you do. We, we are at our last topic and we're going to be talking about the sidewalk prioritization. You're going to hear a little bit about a background. You're going to hear about some outreach that took place in the community, some of the methodology and then next steps. With that, we, we do have staff here in the room. We have Jason Torrey and Steve Maracalla. But the presentation is going to be led by Rita Hu. And Rita, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager. My name is, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rita Hu with Capital Division. I'm managing City of Bothell sidewalk program. Tonight, I will present to you the twenty twenty three sidewalk outreach and prioritization update. This sidewalk prioritization is part of the process for developing multimodal level service policies for Bothell's comprehensive plan. The intent is to perform pedestrian gap analysis and develop a project list that can be fed into the twenty year transportation project list of the comprehensive plan. So for tonight's agenda, I will start with the overview of the sidewalk program and background information. I will share the public outreach feedback received from the public. Also, I will go over the scoring criteria and data analysis for prioritization of sidewalk segments. Lastly, I will talk about the next steps. There is no council action requested tonight, but I do appreciate your feedback on the scoring criteria that I'm going to go over in today's presentation. City of Bothell sidewalk program has a variety of responsibilities, including reviewing sidewalk and curb rent conditions, ranking and prioritizing missing sidewalks and curb rents, creating project lists, monitoring and updating the city's A D A transition plan, seeking grant opportunities, constructing sidewalks and curb rents. So for the background information of the sidewalk program, here is a summary. In two thousand fifteen, we began sidewalk and curb rent inventories. In two thousand sixteen, we established a scoring matrix to rank and prioritize sidewalks and curb rents, as well as develop a citywide sidewalk prioritization list. In late two thousand sixteen, the voters approved the Safe Streets and Sidewalk Levy. It is a nine-year levy from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty five. In two thousand seventeen, we formed a Safe School Workshops Task Force to review school needs and develop a Safe School Workshop Project List. Last year, staff gave a presentation to council about the sidewalk program, sidewalk prioritization, and the next steps which outlined the following. First, revisiting scoring criteria for project prioritization. Two, conducting public outreach to solicit feedback from public for the scoring criteria. Three, freshen up the scoring criteria and scoring matrix for project prioritization as needed. So to review and update our current scoring criteria and matrix, early this year, we hired a consultant to assist city to launch an online survey for three weeks. In total, we received four hundred thirty responses. Most of the respondents live in Bothell and approximately twenty five percent of them work in Bothell. In addition to the online survey, we conducted one-on-one interviews with nine representative of the community and organization that serve people more likely rely on sidewalks in Bothell. So in terms of the public outreach, there were three key questions we asked public. The first question was which types of the areas that the respondents felt the city should prioritize for sidewalk improvements? As you can see from the result table here, more than eighty percent of the respondents wanted to see safe connected sidewalks near school, downtown, shopping business centers, transit stops, facilities serving seniors and disabled people, recreational facilities and service buildings. Just about half of the respondents felt Bothell should make manufactured housing community a top priority. The second question we asked public was what barriers preventing them from walking or using a wheelchair in Bothell? The results showed the top barrier by a large margin of no sidewalk or incomplete sidewalk system network is at about seventy nine percent. This actually reflects what was heard during one-on-one conversation interviews with Bothell representatives. The third question we asked was how respondents feel about Bothell's sidewalk system? The results show that slightly more than half of the respondents said that they strongly, strongly agree or agree that in general, City of Bothell is a walkable city. Approximately twenty five percent of the respondents strongly disagree or disagree that Bothell is walkable. Speaking of demographic comparison, the two graphs here give you an idea how the result of the twenty twenty three survey participation compared to the twenty twenty two overall Bothell population. The results of the racial demographics skew slightly from the overall demographic data. This could be due to a couple of reasons. For instance, some of the respondents selected preferred not to answer the question. Some of the respondents did not answer the question at all. So for the one-on-one interviews, here's what was heard from people who live, work or shop in Bothell, as well as from different backgrounds or living situations. One, sidewalk with buffer zones such as a planter or protected bike lane will increase pedestrian safety. Two, a good sidewalk network is important for Bothell community as well as for economic development. Three, removing barriers such as tripping hazards in sidewalks or curb rents will encourage more people to walk or use a wheelchair in Bothell. Four, there are not enough crosswalks to cross busy streets such as Arthur Way northeast. Five, timing of the walk lines for a multi-lane street should be longer in order to accommodate older or disabled people. Six, providing adequate lighting on the streets will create a comforting neighborhood ambience and encourage more nighttime mobility. Lastly, walkability is always preferred, but not always available when choosing a place to live or shop. Moving on to the scoring criteria. With limited resources and a long list of the missing sidewalk segments to address, the city has to decide which sidewalk segments to be addressed first. Therefore, sidewalk program develop a scoring matrix that consists of nine specific criteria in four categories to prioritize sidewalk segments. So the criteria includes street condition. This criterion helps us differentiate the street has sidewalk or no sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. Street classification. This criteria is to determine which, which street serves more people with mobility needs. Collision data or accident data. It is a very important safety measure, uh, safety measure to determine which street needs safety improvements. Category four has six criteria which are proximity related. Those criteria are to determine the distances between a sidewalk segment and the adjacent facilities, including local school, transit services, public services, commercial business center, recreation facility and manufactured housing communities. The scoring matrix shown on page two hundred twenty eight in the agenda packet represent both two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty three criteria and point system that we follow to determine a project score. Based on the public feedback, review of the criteria of other agency, other agencies, and also the internal Bothell review and discussions, we made some adjustment to the existing two thousand fifteen scoring matrix. The adjustments include the following. The two thousand twenty three criteria weights are more evenly balanced. The proximity criteria now allow partial points. In the previous version, they were previously all or nothing. Transit stop is now its own criteria. It was lumped into public services criterion before. Commercial and recreational facility are two separate criteria. Collision criteria now takes into account of severity, frequency and type of nearby collisions. Also, some minor tweaks to street conditions, street classification criteria. Sidewalk inventories. Before we prioritize missing sidewalk segments, we had to know where the missing sidewalk segments were located. So we utilized payment data in the city's geographic information system, G I S, to identify the existing and the missing sidewalks. This inventory map on the screen shows an area in the public railway in Bothell with and without sidewalks. Altogether, the system identified about two thousand missing sidewalk segments citywide. For data processing, here is an example of G I S analysis map showing the streets with different street condition, street classification and a variety of accident records. When we analyze the missing sidewalk segment, the system takes into consideration of those criteria. Here is an example showing the missing sidewalk segments in relation to the school locations and their buffer areas. The missing sidewalk segment are scored based on the distant buffers. The closer a missing sidewalk segment is to a school, which darker in blue area, the blue area, the higher it scores. Similarly, here is another example showing missing sidewalk segments in relation to the transit stops. For developing pedestrian portion of the twenty year project list for the comprehensive plan, we would use a two-step prioritization approach. The first step was we use the criteria matrix to score all the missing sidewalk segments and develop a citywide project list. Step two was we, our engineer, our capital engineer will review each high rank segment and determine what improvements are most adequate and how the new connection will improve access between destination. Our goal is not just to install sidewalk, but also enhance connectivity of sidewalk network in Bothell. This is an example of the prioritization map showing the thirty top ranked segments in relation to the location of the manufactured housing communities in the city. From the map, you can see the high rank segments are broadly spread out and equitably distributed. This prioritized map is to help us visualize the end result of the scoring process. Last month's staff brief planning commission with the same presentation material. And here is the summary of the discussions and responses. One, how is the new prioritization different than two thousand fifteen in terms of the outcome? Our response was the original top twenty project only meant we see the top thirty in all of the alternate, alternate, alternative prioritization, including the two thousand fifteen version. Two, was the survey response about the right size? We seen it was the right size in comparison with middle housing's survey, which received approximately five hundred responses. Three, is the scoring criteria for prioritizing missing sidewalk segment only? No. The matrix, the scoring criteria and the scoring matrix we design is for prioritizing all the pedestrian-related facilities. Four, is one thousand linear field sidewalk repair work per year typical? We checked with our street maintenance group and they confirmed that on average, they complete approximately fifteen hundred linear field sidewalk repair. Last question, can we use density as one of the criteria? The answer is yes. After the meeting, we actually performed an additional analysis by adding population density as a criteria, which was used a quarter mile buffer area around each missing sidewalk segment fully analysis. And the new results show that our top twenty project segments remain in the top thirty. The purpose of this presentation and discussion with council is to receive feedback on the proposed scoring criteria, which will be used to develop a prioritized sidewalk segment list for incorporation into the Bothell comprehensive plan update. If there is a general acceptance that this methodology reflects the city's priority, staff will continue to move forward. Once again, there is no council action requested tonight. And thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer the questions you may have. Thank you.
Can I leave in? Okay, okay. First off, it's the most fresh in my head. Planning Commission's scoring said include, I concur the broken and tripping hazards and A D A piece, include that in your scoring. Also, and everyone else can weigh in on it. Could, I think it was Frank Love Elementary. Could we use traffic hazard priorities around, like around schools? There was one place in the Safe Streets and Sidewalks. The sidewalk went to one point and ended, and then it continued around the corner. And kids coming home from school were kicked out into a, a street that curved and there was no sidewalk. So does that make sense? Is there a way to inventory streets that might be an extra hazard, especially for kids who are coming home from school and giving that a priority for extending aside, giving priority for sidewalk? That's just a question. And thank you, I wanted to thank you for scoring heavier, giving a heavier weight when it's closer to schools. I would love it. I know there are. Um, I would love it. I know there are some cities I've, a few years ago I mentioned, and I think much to our engineering department's dismay, they said this, it wouldn't work. But I would love to, I know there are cities that have some creative sidewalk solutions, and I hope that we keep that on the back burner of finding different creative ways to put some sidewalks together. Um, and then the the last piece is a question. I saw that the campus uh wanted better sidewalks between campus and the city. Is that, so my question was, do they want wider sidewalks? Or was it just a couple missing places where there was missing sidewalks? Does anyone know?
So I, I think I heard two questions we can answer. I think I can give a shot. I don't know. Rita, do you want to take a shot at um criteria, safety, especially missing gaps near schools?
Yes, definitely. So uh in the current analysis, we actually take into consideration of all the missing sidewalks, sidewalk segments, including those uh around schools. But uh because funding constraints, every years we can only afford building, you know, one or two projects. But we can definitely look into the areas, the areas that around the school.
Thank, thank you, because it just, you know, if it was just like an, okay, so I'm gonna say, you know, fifty more feet, if it was just fifty more feet of sidewalk, that's, that's a big chunk of money to put, put in. But just a little bit more that would get kids around the corner and not have to walk out into traffic, that might not necessarily be obvious on a map. But I, I think the community could help identify those scary places where sidewalk ends up missing.
So to, to try to fill in that gap, so to speak, um Rita and crew went out and identified, I think you're not quite done, but they identified almost all the missing gaps in the city. And this system prioritizes those gaps. So let's say you have a gap near Frank Love, and this is the one you're talking about. That's on her list. Schools is one of the high priorities locations, so that would be on the list. They reviewed safety data, and if it was an area that had incidents, that would score high as well. So in theory, I think your gap would be on there. You did mention tripping hazards, which is maintenance. So what Rita basically said was the same criteria we could use for maintenance, but the funding is different. Typically, we do maintenance in-house. They do fifteen hundred linear feet a year. Um, not many grants for fixing sidewalks. There's more grants for filling in missing sidewalks. So I think we can use the same scoring system and prioritize it, but there'll be two different funding levels and two different ways that we approach this.
That small detail of money. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then the last one, campus, I think I probably have a better shot at answering it. So way back when in the downtown plan, which is adopted, um, this was both a discussion between campus and city. They want, we, we both want more connectivity. There's a couple challenging things there. One is, it's not as close as people think, um, and there's a big hill. And not all the kids want to go from the bottom of campus up that hill into Bothell. So one of the best routes is actually um Beardsley and one eighty fifth, which with the new Husky Village, they're trying to make that as a front to the school. And if you actually walk through that new development and walk straight through campus at the mid-height level, you're pretty much at one elevation. And that hopefully will create a walking corridor. The second corridor that we've been trying to promote, but the campus is a little bit leery about, is the one that unfortunately goes by the cemetery. We don't think there's much that actually needs to do that. I remember Sherman and I walking down the street in the middle, back and forth, and not caring whether our car came or not, and it was pretty safe. Unfortunately, it's dark, it's near a cemetery, so half of the year. It's not the most inviting place to walk.
You did, yeah, you're talking about my hood, yes.
Sorry.
Yes, but, yes, you're right.
But it's been a hard sell.
Right, but it's still safe to walk down the middle of the street. Yes, except in the middle of the night.
Really love to make that into a corridor, because we think it's, you know, it's kind of like a hundred and third versus a hundred and second in downtown. If we were to pick one, we'd pick that one. If I were to pick a one, I would pick Valley View, because I think it's the safest street to walk on right now, and it wouldn't need much to do it. So I think that's a work in progress, yeah. And I'm pretty sure that's probably on her list, because I don't think it has an actual sidewalk. But it may not rank that high, because it's very low volume, it's very safe, um even though it's nearer school.
Yeah, I, I think where it misses the sidewalk is, I think the U, because the U could not build a sidewalk because of the constraints of the cemetery. It built the stretch further down on Valley View, and then it kind of ends about two-thirds of the way down.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that piece.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it's caught in this exercise, your two concerns, I would, I would think, yeah.
I'll be fast. I enjoyed the cemetery-oriented development conversation. Sorry, I had to dad for just a second there. Everything I would have wanted you guys to put in terms of criteria was already there. So, thank you. That part's short. This part's gonna be short, too. Um, is there a way that we could look at installing asphalt sidewalks with an extruded curb that's a lot cheaper, so we could deploy more of it?
I think it is possible. We just need to be more creative and find a, uh, you know, cost-effective solution for some of the areas.
I would encourage that, even if it's not perfect in everything that we would want in a sidewalk. If it's a place people can walk safely, like that, that accomplishes the goal.
Yes.
So creativity, good.
So that's the second thing on her list. The engineer looks at the actual gap and sees what the best methodology is. It might not even, it not necessarily means building another sidewalk if there's one across the street. It might be putting safe crossings and that kind of thing. I will say that each individual site is different. It's not a one fix all. We've put in shoulders with extruded curves, and we've had to pull them out and put actual sidewalks, because if you put them too near elementary schools, the kids like to balance on them, and it's not a good thing. So again, the fit for each particular situation, that's the engineering part that we have.
As somebody with elementary school kid, age kids, that totally checks out.
Challenge, it's not a barrier, yes.
But, but you could do an asphalt extruded and fill it in with asphalt and not go through the expend, expense of concrete. Or is it a push on cost?
It, at some point, it starts becoming a push. So you might as well make it look really nice, because that becomes an issue as well for neighborhoods, so, yeah.
I love getting creative, but having had my bike trapped on the wrong side of an extruded curb a few times, those little breaks are important, too. Especially when your kid is on the back and everybody has to get off, so I can lift the sixty-pound bike, or it's a whole thing. Um, I, but I love the creativity, too, because not every solution is gonna work for every area of the city. Um, so speaking of not everything working for every area of the city, I'm sorry. I'm gonna talk about two twenty eighth again. I know, it always happens. I'm sorry, Steve. Um, but on, when there's a sidewalk just on the one side, and I, I appreciated the note that every intersection is a crosswalk, but I'm not gonna dart across a three-lane road where cars are racing up the hill. I mean, that's, you know, that's not a good idea. Um, and people don't typically stop. I've been honked at for stopping for pedestrians. Like people don't, you know, everybody's got their own priorities. So I just don't necessarily want to see things like when there's, especially when there's bus service on both sides of the road. If there's a sidewalk on one side, that doesn't always mean like we're done. I appreciate in some areas that's sufficient, but I also in, in those, you know, that's an arterial. There's more and more pedestrian traffic on that road. It's, you know, I, two of them are my relatives, but I see more and more people taking that every day. I see the same people walking up and down the hill, and I just want to make sure that we have safe facilities for them to get to where they're going. So I, that's the only thing that gave me pause. I loved the rest of it. I should have started with that. But I really, I appreciate the update to the prioritization. I just don't want to see us de-prioritize something because there's a sidewalk on one side when it's a big, busy corridor. Thank you.
All right, let's wrap it up. Um, I just have a couple questions. Um, but mostly thanks, honestly, because I, I think that this new prioritization system is more refined and detailed, um, and I think it's giving, is gonna give us all better guidance. Um, and so I am a little bit curious to hear more about the neighborhood representatives. Um, I especially like how you, you took that approach, um especially as we are talking about uh building, um, building relationships with neighborhoods and better understanding what each of the neighborhood's needs are. Um, so a little curious about organizations that, that you spoke with and how you, how you located neighborhood representatives to talk to.
Oh, yes, so we keep track of a list. So see, uh, so we reach out to the, I see more than nine. Altogether, we reach out to maybe twelve or sixteen neighborhoods and communities, and altogether, we receive feedback from nine of them. That's why uh we were able to have a, uh, interview, the direct interviews, uh, conversation we set. So we talk about our, uh, we talk about the city's sidewalk systems, and we also talk about the need, how the city would actually improve, or how the city can improve the sidewalk systems. So, yes, it's a, it's a one-hour conversation to talk about the Bothell, the Bothell system, the Bothell sidewalk systems, and also understand their needs based on their perspectives.
So council member Alderks on page two eleven is a list. There's nine of them there. Um, Alyssa Burnett, Adult Life Center, Bothell Library, Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, Cascadia College, Disability Rights, Washington Green Acres Park, Refugee and Immigrant Services Northwest, Snohomish County Transportation Coalition, and Woodcrest Estates. So those are the nine.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for having an additional hidden slide. That's fantastic. Um, one, another question I have is on the, the, the survey that people, that was given out to the public. On the question about walkability in Bothell, is it possible to see a breakdown by county? I'm thinking that perhaps Snohomish County residents might have a different take on walkability than King County residents.
We can go back to look at our data, see if, uh, I don't have an answer right now, but we can definitely go back and look at the data we have to see if we can break it up by counties.
Uh, yeah, I'd appreciate that. I think council member Dodd might appreciate it as well. Uh, okay. Uh, and then last, last comment, really. Um, I just want to thank the street maintenance crews who do repair sidewalks. Um, and also for the times when a safe crossing has been uh determined and is then marked. Uh, my neighborhood has been a beneficiary of your efforts, and I really appreciate it. Um, and I want you to know that, that people in our community see the work that you do and, and greatly appreciate it. Um, last thing I want to add is this, not that many people in the city are paying attention at this time of night, but for the future YouTube video, um, there is a form on the website that I'm gonna call a community action request. Um, and you can, if you see a problem in the neighborhood in a, in a, in a location, you can complete a, this action request that will go to the city and then get formed out to the appropriate organization, agency, department that can then um address that concern. And so that's the kind of thing, if you see a sidewalk that needs repair, uh, if you are worried about a crossing, that is one of the tools I feel like are available to us as, as residents. Um, and, and I really appreciate that we have that available to us. Um, and I've, and I've seen them be like, the city staff be really responsive to them. So if you don't already know about the action request form, Google it, because unfortunately, Google still works better to search the city website than the city website search engine does. Um, but thank you so much for this presentation, uh, for continuing to prioritize sidewalks in the city. Um, and, and I'm glad we're having the conversation. Thanks so much, Rita, you too, for being here.
Thank you.
So just to summarize for Rita, I think what we'll do now would be, if we get that head nod, we will use this criteria and we will move forward, I think. Okay, and Rita, was there any other next things?
Uh, not for me.
Just to clarify, density is a criteria going forward?
That's actually a great question. Is density included, then?
Not at this time, but we can actually include it. Actually, we ran the analysis, so there's no problem if we want to include the densities.
I thought there was a criteria for number of people served. And I thought that was a proxy for the amount of people that would live nearby and walk on the sidewalk.
That was probably more the street classification, because that tends to tell us how busy it's gonna get.
Okay, then yes, the more people live there, the more people will walk on, on it.
Okay, so the list that we have included in your packet was the result of the density or no?
No density.
Okay, so it'd be a little different, but what you're basically saying is our top twenty previously would still be in the top thirty of that list. So if you guys are cool with that, then I guess we, Rita, we're okay with to leave density in and move forward with that one?
No problem, yes.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Appreciate y'all. Council conversations. I'm gonna gavel real fast unless somebody starts talking. I'm tired.
Going to meet at the open house at um
Yep.
Skyview, right?
Yep, next Thursday, this Thursday, next Thursday.
And it's Arbor Day Saturday. Don't forget Arbor Day.
I like that we're all gonna leave the meeting with that Arbor Day Foundation theme stuck in our heads, and if you didn't, now you will.
Kyle, do you have anything for us today?
I was going to, but it's past my curfew.
All right, let's go.
Recording stopped.